If the um, community defines its geography in a certain way, but then that geography produces a CVAP that's that that results in packing, what 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 should we do?
You gotta bring it down. You're one of the things that I know in working with a lot of redistricting commissions. You get a lot of public comments and you get a lot of public comments in a lot of ways. Like last night, I watched your hearing. You had a hundred or so people in the meeting room. You're getting a lot of information. There's a lot of terminology that's being used. A lot of people are very passionate about what they're advocating. But they don't make the law. I mean, the law controls. So if I advocate for something and that's going to result in a sixty-five percent CVAP Latino population, sorry, Bruce, we can't do that. So the, I think we talked about the first time we chatted discernment, looking at these comments, realizing the the requirements that we, you know, we've been talking about tonight. So you you obviously make the call, but the call has to be legally compliant. So regardless of what they say about geography, if it's going to push up CVAP and it's going to pack the district, then you can't do that.
Commissioner Ponce.
Thank you, Mr. Adelson. I am so glad now that we are speaking openly and plainly about VAT numbers and CVAP numbers. And use the word benchmark to introduce numbers like sixty-two percent, et cetera, et cetera. So I am so glad to hear now that we are, we can use those numbers in our discussion because they are there. They're in front of us. They've been in front of us all along. And I'm so glad we can use as that as logic and rationale for moving forward some decisions. Uh, so I really appreciate your opening candidness about using those numbers. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Commissioner Hanson.
We haven't talked too much about the area that where I live in Claremont until today, which where it was defined as a AAPI community. This is a very middle-class beach-oriented population. They consider themselves surfers. Um, all the kids in this neighborhood are, and the adults now are grown-up surfers. And there's to end up in the rec, the current configuration with Claremont attached to El Cajon makes no sense at all. There is no connection between those two neighborhoods. And here we are at the very end. And now Claremont is, and even Kurt, well, Kearney Mason, I could understand a little bit because, but it's a more commercial area. But it doesn't get more middle-class San Diego beach than Claremont. And and I I just can't imagine how they would, the people here would feel. They're already bent because the city redistricting committee has chopped Claremont up in four pieces, two pieces, one piece, back and forth. And to end up at the county district that is even farther east from the district we're in now, it just doesn't make any sense.
And I appreciate that the question and comment. I'm very sensitive to having seemingly disparate connections in districts. And one of the realities is that they're going to be, there will be things like that. And I'm not talking about any particular area or the community that you referenced, but it's almost unavoidable to balance population comply with the US Constitution, the Voting Rights Act and your own state requirements. There will be communities that are are put together that may not have a lot of co- in common. Frankly, where I live in my congressional district, we're united with rural communities going to the west of where I live in Maryland that's on the border of West Virginia. That is a very different community from where I live. But that's part of the reality with redistricting. So what I would encourage a couple of things that there will be these connections that are made to fit within all of the many compliance uh requirements that you have. If there is a a true disparate connection, that's something that I would encourage a discussion about. But I also wanted to talk briefly about the AAPI community. I that as 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 you all may know, I'm not aware that that community has been analyzed as far as voting behavior or election history. So they can be discreet communities as they appear in the county, but we can't use their uh being a minority, being AAPI communities as any kind of election analysis or making assumptions about their electoral behavior. That is something I caution against. The Supreme Court has spoken to that to be careful about it. So but also to wrap up, Commissioner, I think that I appreciate what you're saying. I know that dynamic. I've seen it play out in redistricting for more than twenty years. Sometimes that does happen. Sometimes it does not. It's really part of the deliberative process to discuss the concerns that you bring to the table and the concerns that people in the communities may have as well.
I think the thing that troubles me the most is the fact that this has come up after the deadline to make comment. And this configuration has not shown up anywhere in any of the maps that we have shown and discussed with the community.
Commissioner Hanson, I'll ask you to save that for our actual discussion of motions because right now I want to remain focused on Mr. Adelson and make sure commissioners who want to ask a specific analytic question along lines what you just asked, have a chance to do so. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, then Commissioner Serbin, and then I'll be closing it for questions to Mr. Adelson, although hopefully you can stay with us for at least a bit and we can continue to discuss things. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Yeah, so my question is a little bit of um, a a follow-up to what Commissioner Hanson was just asking about. And she's referring to some changes that were made to the map because we're trying to on, to respond to AAPI um, COI input that public input that we got. And um, I guess my question here is when, how do we balance, for example, COI input? And um, this other um, comment that Barbara Hanson was just making about the fact that what it does is it actually creates a map that, as she put it, doesn't make sense because you have a coastal community that we have to go and and grab uh in order to um try and respect uh or in order to try and respond. Um, and I I I guess in in some way we're doing a test to see, you know, if we can do that. But um, it's it's my understanding. And so the 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 second part of this question is it's my understanding that we actually don't have VRA requirements with regards to the the Asian American community in in San Diego. So but we do have COI input. So how do we balance all of that and how should we think of it?
It's it's hard because you have a lot to balance. And I noticed on the the screen before we started our dialogue. When you have a big population deviation that you you'll have to take care of and there are, you'll have to move more communities around. But let's talk about the two points that there are VRA issues with the Asian American community. That's the Asia, the in in the your consultant's report, they have an Asian American or Asian electoral history. Then AAPI community is listed as as a demographic. But I'm not aware that the AAPI demographic has been analyzed. So they cannot be used as part of election analysis and the whole ability to elect conversation. But Asian voters have had a significant record of success that I'm presuming, given your consultant's report, their AAPI isn't included in that. Asian voters have done pretty well electing candidates of choice. So that's something to be aware of. One of the challenging aspects is that your coalition voting is very inconsistent. You have, as I said, one, one group votes with one group, another group one time, then they don't vote with another. So that's part of the the whole VRA compliance aspect of that that I'm that I'm very interested about when you um, complete your your maps. As far as communities of interest, the VRA and the US Constitution concern is that you don't split up discreet, compact minority communities. You don't cut them in half, spread them over several districts. And I'm talking about, let's say, the Native American reservation is the best example. If you split a Native American reservation into several districts, that typically is inadvisable because that's a clear, distinct minority community, uh, compact, discreet, all the 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 key aspects. The balancing that you refer to, Commissioner, is a big, that's redistricting. And there will be conflicts. There will be things that don't make sense, that don't look, that seem odd. That my concern legally under the VRA is like, as we talked about before, these reach outs that are deliberate for minority communities where you have that narrow snake-like reach only to grab minority communities. That's not something that I would advise. So it I I, you know, I I well understand where you're coming from. And I've been in the room physically, not virtually, where and virtually too, where at in the last day, new things are brought up. And what I, what I always advise is give it a try. See what it looks like, experiment, talk about it. Maybe it doesn't work and maybe it does. Um, so does that, does that help? Yes, I I I I understand it is, and it's challenging. Just keep in mind, keep those discrete minority communities. Don't split them up among districts. Keep them whole and be aware of the potential dilutive impact in a district like District One. If you add communities that have a different electoral history, for example, then that could be a a VRA issue.
All right, Commissioner Serbin, and I see Commissioner Diaz, Commissioner Serbin, sorry. Okay, you you don't need to anymore. Okay, so Commissioner Diaz, you have a m- moment of opportunity. Go ahead.
Thank you. My question is on compact geographical compactness. Uh, one of the commissioners mentioned that the new map, it looks like referring to District Two. Because we've taken out the planning areas of um, by the Odo and Spring Valley. Like, how do you, how do you, what is your opinion about that? Because the report says it's geographically compact.
The report, there's a report, um, or have you run those compactness like the Polesby Popper test to determine compactness of of a district? Have you done that?
I'm not sure. I'm just reading Flo's data sheet.
Okay.
Do you want to jump in?
Yeah.
Yes. Hey, Marguerite, I think you're still on mute.
There we go.
Yep.
Compactness plays on both sides, plays federally and plays in state law. Uh, there's a compactness requirement under Section Two and uh, in order to state a claim. But Commissioner Diaz, I think you're referring to the compactness requirement in the criteria in state law. And it's, it's unique in that it doesn't talk about compactness of the shape of the districts, but compactnesses of the populations. So what that is trying, so the shape of the districts really makes no difference other than as an indicator of Gary Mandering. So if you have what is called the classic barbell district, you have one population center over here and a narrow connector and another population center here, and the group in between was skipped over. That is lack of compactness under California law. So it's, you you are not permitted to bypass nearby populations to reach out and get others for different purposes. Now, I must say, it's the least of the criteria. It's the lowest priority in California law. Everything else is going to be satisfied first. And you may find out that creating a population compact district for a set of purposes, prob- probably COI, may cause the remainder to become somewhat non-compact because the natural community that you bypassed was included in the other district. Those are the type of trade-offs that happen in redistricting. And they're completely legal. They're within your discretion, and that's why we want you to talk. Why does that district look odd? Why does the BIPOC district, the BIPOC corridor, look odd now? Yes, you apply these geographical measures and it's going to be off the charts for lack of compactness. But the populations are compact. They follow the freeway. They follow the communities. They follow, they follow the transportation corridors, the movement, the from the city into the more rural areas, the housing issues. So i- it's a different concept and we're going to have to look at it very carefully. But even a district as nice and compact as five, just by following the border of Escondido, it it, you know, it looks like a war shot test.
It wouldn't have a good Polesby Popper.
It would not. Sure. And yet it's totally consistent with communities of interest. And so I, Commissioner Diaz, I hope that helps. From a Polesby Popper perspective, you're totally right that the BIPOC district is getting less and less compact, but the populations in it remain compact.
And Marguerite, let me, let me just ask the corollary and then turn to Commissioner Inman. If a population is not that compact, if it is spread out, even as a community of interest or elements of a community of interest, the compactness argument is under the discretion of the commission might be.
Yes, it is.
Very good. All right. Commissioner Inman.
I can, thank you, Marguerite. If I could jump in really quickly, Mr. Chairman. If you imagine that this is a large minority community and it's up here, and I use a narrow connector like this to connect it to something down here federally, that could be a a concern because this is a majority-minority community. And you are stretching out to connect it. My first thought is why? And do you have a non-race-based consideration for that? The federal requirement for compactness is much narrower, as Marguerite was saying, than your state law. It's only really about minority communities to prevent racial gerrymanders, those reach outs primarily predominantly to capture a racial group. That's something that would be problematic.
And particularly through a populated area.
I mean, that could be even more problematic that when, and some of it is good. You can see it with your eyes. But just look, imagine that ball up here and that narrow connector. Man, that's going to be uh, raise some eyebrows.
Commissioner Inman.
Um, so I, um, so this is a question about the map that Alex showed us and the overlay. It had the existing supervisory boundaries. And what would be useful is if I saw uh, draft map thirteen A super. So I don't know if you want to take this now or postpone uh, David, but I was just thinking the useful map would be to overlay what they've created with uh, draft map thirteen A boundaries.
I think that'd be useful to do, but let's do that um, as we move into the discussion.
Okay, that's fine.
I want to stay focused on technical. And again, Bruce and Marg- Marguerite, I hope you'll uh, address that at the proper moment. Commissioner Serbin, briefly.
Can I just see the map again, please? The the one that Alex put up, it would be helpful.
Yes, we're talking about the result of of where we ended.
Thirteen, eight, ten, or whatever.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Uh, let me get it back up. Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
Put on a little context here with some streets.
Those lines are thirteen A, right? That's not the current district. That is thirteen A, that's compared.
This is thirteen A, yes, that we're.
Yeah, that's not what he sent to the PDF document. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Oh, sorry, the PDF is always showing existing. Apologies.
Yeah.
Oh, was this already sent out to us?
Okay, Commissioner Serbin, what what did you want to ask about?
Oh, nothing. I just wanted to see it. I didn't realize it was already sent out to us. I just wanted to take a screenshot of it so I can refer to it as we talk.
Yeah, and if you could put the actual, the existing boundaries in a different color, uh, that would be helpful, too.
Uh, sorry, where? On my screen right now?
The twenty-eleven uh, district boundaries, you're, so we can see the how it comes to map thirteen plus an overlay of um, the the current boundary lines.
Sure, okay. So what I'm going to do really quickly here is show you guys the.
I just want to say that it it will be challenging for Alex to add these new features to that PDF report and resend it.
Okay.
But we can pull it up on the screen.
Let's focus on, let's focus on the screen. And I really want to be careful about talking about the map itself uh, without getting into motions because we're loo- we're spending some quality time, but it is time.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is color is still like where we're actively at after the break. So making all those changes. And then the pink lines are thirteen A and the green lines are existing two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, it looks, it looks kind of a mess, but I.
It's hard to do, yeah. Can I, maybe I'll step through it here for you? So existing, existing two thousand and eleven in green versus.
Let's stop there. Yeah, let's stop there. Um, so what you've got in green right now is the two thousand and eleven?
Yes.
And what's in color is the revision that you did over lunch.
Correct.
Okay, let's pause that there for a second. Commissioners, I'm perfectly happy to start working for motions with this map as one to view. I'm also perfectly happy to come back to it. Um, but my guess is what we need to do right now is get into motions working from the summary statements.
But, Chairman, it would be better to have thirteen A instead of the existing supervisory, because that's where the change occurred. If you, if you.
I see, sir. Yeah, okay, fair enough. Um.
Chair.
Uh, uh, just one moment. Alex, can I ask you to take the screen, the map down?
Yep.
Your share screen. And could I ask you to have prepared different combinations of those overlays? So that if we ask, we can just pull it up, put it up.
Sure.
Terrific. Rosette, sorry, please.
No problem. I I just wondered if it might um, be useful or helpful for us to kind of understand what the biggest challenges are. Are we going to be working from the changed map? Um, in our motions or from the original map? And if it's from the changed map, I'm wondering if it might be useful even in both, either case, if we have some kind of um, review or like, what are the big challenges? Like what, do you know what I mean? Like, we, these are the things we need to fix. This, this has the most, this has the least. I'm wondering if we could kind of try to recap that first.
The vision I have for this, but very much subject to advice and commissioner agreement, is that the single biggest issue we have is population deviation. There are several questions within that. And I'd be happy to figure out which we take first. And I'm, I'm willing to continue that as kind of an extended thematic discussion rather than under specific motions because I think it'll be very hard to define specific motions initially. I think we've got to work through the deviations, probably starting with the biggest. And then at some point, whether we go through all five or not, turn to something more specific on mapping. Does that sound reasonable?
May I ask a question?
Please.
Yes, are the motions going to move from this working draft? Are they going to move from thirteen A?
I would propose for now to work from the working draft.
Okay. I want to mention that the working draft includes elements that were not approved by a vote. And I'm wondering if it makes sense to have a vote, not that this is the map, but this is the working draft.
Right. And normally I would agree. But in this case, because the working draft may have problems that require us to go back to the original thirteen A, I want to have at least a short discussion about the deviations. That should inform us on which one to work from for motions. But for the deviation discussion, if you will, I want to work from the revised, the lunch revision. Once we decide, though, it's a very fair point and one I wanted to confirm with you. Once we decide we're making progress on that, if we need to then start making motions on that lunch revision map, we definitely will need a vote to say we've approved that lunch revision as our starting point rather than the earlier vote on thirteen A. So it's a long way of saying we may have to have another vote very soon. But for right now, I'd rather start with the deviations as related to the lunch revision in in somewhat of a non-binding conversation. Very good. So, um, Commissioner Inman, go ahead, please.
Um, so if you want to, do you want me to talk about some geographies to move around to reduce the deviations, Chairman?
Yeah, I think that's probably useful. I wanted to just check with commissioners, is there any objection to turning to that lunch revision map to explore things along lines what Commissioner Inman just said? Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
I, I think, I think, I think Commissioner Diaz had her hand up first.
Right.
No, I was concerned about making an official action with the map because if we, then that way we can, we have it on the record that we're working from it. I just was confused what sort of the logic behind what we're doing.
Okay.
Mike, I was just going to reiterate what I said before, and that's, I wonder if we should sort of um, kind of have a top line, you know, these are the big issues. And then Commissioner Inman could start um, proposing changes to address those just so that we are all kind of level set with regards to what the the challenges are. But if you don't want to do that, that's fine. I'm just suggesting.
Commissioner Inman said, okay.
All right, that's fine. I was going to hit on the biggest two deviations was what I was going to hit.
Okay, but so let me ask, let me ask Flo to put up the population chart one more time. And that'll be just before a moment. Okay.
So it's two and three that have the issue, the biggest deviation.
And two plus eleven point four, three minus seven point three. Okay? Good, Commissioner Inman, well, let's take this one down and we'll bring the map, the the lunch revision map up.
And uh, the overlay should be draft map thirteen A, please.
By the way, if we go back to that overlay, you see two other, can we go back one, just one second, to that chart? Because we're still, you know, even with five and um, one, we're still over ten percent.
Correct. And what I, uh, what I want to see, what the ideas are first that give us maximum chance for progress. And then if we have to retreat to something that results in nine point eight, we can do that, but we'll try the big chunks first because I think there has been some serious progress made on the various issues that were discussed in thematic. But it's a very fair point, Commissioner Chen. All right, back to the map. We've, we're going to overlay thirteen A, right? Or underlay.
Um, so we've got the, we've got the configuration uh, that I would, if you could zoom in on the uh, Tierra Santa area, the the area that we added with something there. And so if you look at Sierra Mesa and the area, uh, that would be east of uh, the fifteen, essentially. Yeah, Kearney Mesa, uh, Sierra, uh, it's kind of that Sierra Mesa, those two areas. If you pull those out and move them into the East County, I think that that would drop the population for District Two and increase the rural um, area, which is what we need to do. We need to reduce uh, population of District Two. It's over by seventy-four thousand. And we need to increase the population of District Three. So that would move us in the right direction. And so that's one suggestion. In other words, we didn't need to add Kearney Mesa and Sierra Mesa to District Two to achieve what we were trying to achieve.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Inman. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Inman, I, if I may, I'll just say that I actually during the lunch break. Started down that path, so I have a, yep, we have that.
And I think that I did a quick thing, I was like seventy thousand folks or something like that. But you would move out of D two and into D three, so D two would come out about even. D three would then be over by about thirty, actually.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just looking at the stats one more time, I I'll pull the numbers real quick for uh. For Kearney Mason, Sarah Mesa, off the top of my head, it was somewhere around thirty-five thousand. Um, so yeah, you're bringing two down uh to about thirty-five thousand over, and then. District Three is gonna be still under by about, you know, thirteen, twelve, thirteen thousand.
So that reduces those deviations, we still have some other deviations to address, but I think that moves us. To where uh we're in a better spot. We still have a weird, kind of a, an interesting shape to D two. Yeah, but. Anyway. That's all I have, Chair Ben, at this point.
No, thank you, um. Yeah, I've got Co-Vice Chair Garcia and Commissioner Diaz, I wasn't sure who went first. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Diaz.
Um, with Ken's last um change, I I'm just curious, is it the entire Kearney Mesa, because the convoy corridor is right? Um, I just can't see the street um. Map very clearly, I mean, that was a significant part of.
That would move the convoy area, you're right, so that would move convoy into the East County.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's such a great idea, but if. That's the only way that we could. You know, I'm just concerned about the coin, but, but.
First trade-offs, yeah.
Yes, I understand that, um, but has anyone looked into um? Yeah, I see Nava Hosts, we already talked about that, um. Yeah, can you zoom out, please? Um, we did mention that, well, La Prisa. Was part of, which was originally part of D one, but had moved. To the east, is that, that's because of the planning area, correct?
Yeah. And also because remember, D three is still underpopulated at this point, so taking that on was kind of beneficial to 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 that East County District.
Commissioner Diaz and other commissioners, I'll ask to focus at least for the moment. On the two deviations that Commissioner Inman mentioned. And what could be, and in addition to or instead of what he proposed.
So it, would it be a split along the one sixty-three, is that what you're looking at, because the? I'm just, it's just really hard for me to see right here, so convoy goes right straight down the middle. But are you gonna pull only from this side, the East Claremont Mesa Boulevard side? Or is it the entire chunk of Kearney Mesa, I just, I just want to be clear on that.
Uh, my thing was the entire chunk, so I was sticking with these uh boundaries, the orange boundaries that are on the map, so there, so it would be everything. In the orange boundary.
I don't think there's much of a population in the convoy district that it would really impact.
It's businesses, you're right, yeah, it's businesses, the population is fairly low.
I mean, it's Sarah Mesa that would have the larger impact on population.
So you could follow. Um, a three-way and keep convoy the other way, and it probably wouldn't change the population numbers a whole lot, I think you're right, Commissioner Servin.
I will check population as we speak.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
And that was, that's a trade-off that I'm, I'm willing to do, since if it's less not as populated, or. That would help with the population deviation.
And this highlighted triangle that I'm showing right here, these blocks sum to one thousand three hundred and nine people.
So again, for balancing population, you keep the convoy district. In D two and still achieve what we're trying to achieve.
John, did you want to add something?
Oh, no, I will, I I would just wanted to mention that, and I did, that Sarah Mesa is the larger of the population that you'd be impacting.
Very good, thank you.
What's the population of Claremont Mesa, if I could ask, please?
It's large, it's around seventy thousand, I believe.
Uh, yeah, I think it's seventy-nine, actually, but.
Seventy-nine, yeah.
Right now.
Seventy-nine is what I think we were told earlier. Okay, Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Yeah, I, so I was gonna say, wh-what if we move Claremont Mesa back into the coastal district, because that actually seems to make more sense, and or. Um, and I know this, that this will not sit well with some people, but in the North County. Look at um Black Mountain Ranch of Penasquitos and that area to move into East County, because we did hear some. Comment about them, that being a trend in the future, that they would be sort of more East County oriented. Um, instead of um. These two other areas that maybe don't provide that much population.
I'll just jump in real quick to say that what I'm highlighting here is the block Claremont Mesa, and it's, it is eighty, uh seventy-nine thousand eight oh five, so pretty high. Um, and then just thinking about kind of what that would do, that's seventy-nine thousand, adding that to District Four. Um, you're looking at about fifty thousand over before making anything that Commissioner Garcia just said to.
Right, and then I would offset that, like I said, in the North County with uh some of the area. That's uh adjacent to fifteen. Because again, these are trade-offs we have to make, and that actually looks like a much. Um, to me, it looks like a cleaner, less. Um. Contorted map. But, just, just, just suggesting it.
Okay, well, let's, let's focus on the numbers for the moment, and what that reveals, and then turn to other aspects. Alex, do you need some time to work on that?
Um. Yes, just a little bit, so.
Go ahead.
About, yep.
Yeah, let me see.
I'm gonna do this live, so I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing, and it's gonna be just a little rough, we're obviously gonna have to clean up the edges, but Commissioner Inman, we're talking about. These two planning areas moving from the green into the yellow.
Yes.
Okay. Give me one, about one minute.
Commissioner Servin, is it something that can be captured without material on the screen for less than a minute?
Uh, is there a reason why we're not looking at Mission Valley as well, too?
We can certainly do so, um, but let's finish this piece first, good.
I mean, I can guess why, I mean, Mission Valley and East County, but.
Well, again, we can look at it. Commissioners, I will alert you that I know individual commissioners have. Uh, some priorities, in some cases, medical. Um, where we're going to start seeing people departing in the next hour or two. And I'll ask you to keep that in consideration uh as we move forward.
While we're waiting for Alex, if I could just mention, I know we are focused on just District Two and District Three exchanges, but there are some other. Sort of uh changes that can happen between not just the two that we're talking about. Um, but that are sort of cascading changes that may lower the deviation as well. Uh, those at some point are a little bit more difficult. To, I think, just discuss from motions without seeing the movements of the map, so if there's an opportunity to. Sort of look at some of those at some point, I think we'd be able to um talk about those if if it becomes helpful.
That sounds like it'll be time well spent, so we will at least keep that in pocket, uh, Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Yeah, I noticed that uh D one. Um, ended up, I think, really low in population, and I, wondering, I can't remember that we made other changes besides moving. Coronado into that district, is it because we moved La Prenta out?
Correct.
Um. Wow, okay, so that, okay, thank you.
And I'll just say that kind of hints at one of the things that I was just hinting at, there are some other ways that we can make up the population in D one.
We will stand by.
Thank you, Alex. Yeah, so back to sharing my screen, just bear with me as it cranks out the the stats on a PDF, but you can see that the change is made, so.
Um, Alex, I don't know if you heard, but uh Commissioner Servin was asking about Mission Valley.
Right, I think, yeah, like as he posed the question, I think maybe kind of why is it, you know, it does extend all the way over here to the north end of Old Downtown, so if we took. All that certainly possible, just um. It's a, it's an elongated, you know, planning area right here.
It would cut off the district, wouldn't it, Alex?
Yeah, it wouldn't be contiguous.
Yeah.
It became uh yellow and part of East County.
It was bisected. Uh, the, the green.
No, this is also Mission Valley right here. I believe.
I think we're gonna have to split some of these planning districts.
Yeah, yeah, Mission Valley, see, it would, it would.
So that went to three.
What if it was the part of Mission Valley that's east of the, I think this is the one sixty-three, right?
Right here. Probably, yeah, I can check the population real quick, too, while the thing is running.
The whole planning is.
The part of just over eleven thousand. And I'll turn on the street so we can see.
It's actually.
That's the, you know, the name is better than me, but that's inland freeway.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's an okay time, Commissioner Krugliak has her hu- hand up, welcome again.
Uh, can you hear me?
Sorry, that's the eight oh five, by the way, I was wrong.
Thank you.
Um, so, I've been, I've been just watching, obviously I missed a lot from this morning, but I I feel very much like Solomon in the Bible, where like. Uh, one mother wanted fourteen, one mother wanted thirteen A, and Solomon said, well, let's just cut the baby in half, and I feel like that's what this map is. I can't imagine that it makes anyone happy, except maybe uh Saul Brook Bonso in some areas in District Five. Um, why are, why are we going through the motion and trying to like pull in Mission Valley from a map that? I, I can't imagine makes the BIPOC community, the Southern community, the Eastern community, the coastal community, I can't imagine it makes anyone happy. Why, I, I just don't get it, why are we moving forward with motions on this map?
Right.
I'm done.
No, no, I understand.
Like a fair open question about it.
Yeah, it, you know, it's, and it's more than a rhetorical question, I would say that. First of all, I think most commissioners would not have expected this large deviation. From some of the things that were being discussed, and we heard that just a moment ago. Uh, I'd also say that the decision to move to thirteen A happened early enough. Uh, that's undoubtedly, there are things that happened in the thematic discussion that might have drawn more on fourteen. But there were also some very strong feelings expressed about fourteen, so in the end, Commissioner Krugliak, I would say. Um, the, the, rather than focus on where the weaknesses are right now. See what we can do to correct those weaknesses. Using whatever sources of information we have, including the data and inputs that informed map fourteen. That's why I've continued to remind commissioners, draw on any source you need with previous mapping efforts, because our demographic has done such a good job on that. Commissioner Dustal and then Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Thank you, I, I wanted to. Look at, um. Given that I think uh Al Cajon is off the table, I think we already decided that, everybody wanted it in this district. I think we have to go back up to that northern area that Commissioner Garcia was talking about, because we need to, more population. Um, in. In District Three. And out of District. Whatever District it's in right now, so um, so I just think we need to explore that, it's.
I, I think that, Alex, can we, are you running anything right now that would inhibit doing that?
Uh, nope, but I will just pop open the statistics to show. There is that change from most Commissioner Inman. So now we're, you know, much lower, we're at eighteen, you know, eighteen point seven, I think it was, now we're at twelve point one, the difference between two and three. Um, has been reduced a bit, uh, but two is still over by forty-four thousand roughly. Um, and just as a reminder, what that looks like is um. Moving. This part of, uh, let me change it, let's see. Right here, moving this area. Most of Kearney Mesa, but not convoy area into D three, yellow district, East County.
Now, can you put the statistics page back up?
Yes.
Thank you, okay, before, now, this is where I need the commission's help. Before we do. Uh. Turn back to mapping in the north, as Commissioner Dustal and Co-Vice Chair Garcia proposed. Are there any particular comments on these new statistics or the results we've seen? Um, I see several hands, but let me ask. Visually. Commissioner Servin? Okay, all right, so with this in mind, Alex, let's take this down. Let us look at the northern area that Commissioner Dustal was the most recent one to describe.
Yep.
Commissioner Brown, is that a hand anticipating a discussion? Okay.
And if all is silence, I can explain the the rationale for that, as we've been asked to do. Um, it goes back to what we talked about earlier, what we heard from the attorneys about, we need to keep the community together. Um, that, that API community, I think it is important to keep that community together up in that northern area. But not necessarily in the district that cannot handle that population, but rather, so let's keep them together, but in. The, the area that needs population, so that's my reasoning for that.
Bearing in mind what we heard from Special VRA Council and Council, yeah, very good.
Sorry, I thought we took a vote on, a near unanimous vote on this already.
I'm waiting.
Isn't that how this happened?
Mm-hmm.
Can we go back to what was emailed to us as our, our statements?
I'd rather stay with this for just a minute, but Commissioner Servin, it's a very good point, we can go back to the summary statements. Alex, would it be possible to, to explore some of that off-screen and bring it back to us?
Sure, can we, I mean, the, the idea here is to um. Put some of Rancho Penasquitos or Miramasa, those things back into the East County.
Well, I don't, no, I, I didn't have the impression that was what we were talking about, Commissioner Dustal, you were talking most recently about this, or Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
I would say maybe Black Mountain Ranch and Rancho Penasquitos, I think Miramasa, not necessarily, no, no.
All right, Alex, let me ask you, and I see Commissioner Servin's reaction, let me ask you to do both Black Mountain Ranch on its own. And Black Mountain Ranch uh. With Rancho Penasquitos, keeping in mind what we're about to discuss, but Alex, if you could do that offline, and we'll do a bit of a discussion on the. Summary statement, especially with regards to this area.
Sounds good.
Barbara, thank you, Barbara, can you have staff bring up the summary statements, all of them on one page, I hope?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Are they all visible enough, can we maybe increase the screen size a little bit? Or if they're goo- good enough for commissioners, I'm fine with that, okay, um, Commissioner Servin? Then Commissioner Brown, assuming she can speak to this. Then Commissioner Brown, assuming she can speak to this, or alongside this, Commissioner Servant.
You're muted.
I guess, you know, all I wanted to say is I thought that we took a vote on this already, and to, and it looked to me as if it were near unanimous, so I'm, I'm not sure why we're revisiting. What we're doing with Mira Mesa and PQ, and, and also, if we're trying to maintain the cohesiveness of, of. Of this community, of the API community, I mean, splitting Mira Mesa and PQ apart doesn't make any sense.
I agree.
And, 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 and hold on, I, I think you're taking this in, in, in from the wrong direction, talking about the API community, again, like, we are respecting the API community. But more so, PQ and Mira Mesa are coastal communities. That's, that's the, that's, that's what is, that's what we've heard from. I had, I don't see, I don't know why, how you can shake your head at that, I mean, we've maybe had a handful of comments. That said, that were in support of PQ going into the East County, otherwise, everything has overwhelmingly said PQ is a part of the coastal district.
Okay.
I just offer something.
Yes, please.
I, I believe that you can, with the population of where we've gotten down to, it's probably worth at, Alex looking. At these separately, and looking at one with just Rancho, or sorry, with just Black Mountain Ranch, to see what that does for populate. Population, and then another with both, uh, to see the difference between those two.
All right, so let me take Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Dustle, Commissioner Diaz just withdrew, so Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner Dustle, please.
Okay, can we look on the map at La Presa, La Presa?
I'd rather stay away from that for the moment, and stay focused just on, on this part of the discussion, Commissioner, if that's okay.
I was just thinking that if we moved that back down into District One, we might have our population, okay. Is it in, is it in District Two right now, or three?
It's in three, and so at there, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that, no, 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 it's, all ideas are welcome, that's good.
It's in three, but, but it was right above one, right?
Right.
It was, yep.
And it's about thirty-five thousand people or so.
Yes.
So. That would bring one to zilch. Uh, it's not gonna do, you still have to do something with you, okay.
Again, Commissioner, we'll come back to that, but I, I see your thinking and appreciate the, the attempt to address it, thank you, Commissioner Dustle.
So I wanted to, uh, address Commissioner Serbin's point, because I think it's a good one, and that was my point about. There, I heard two different things up in this area, as I understood it. One was Rancho Penasquitos and another area, I can't remember the name. We don't want to be in East County, we want to be in the coastal district, so that was one issue. The other issue was, I understood there was an API community up here, and so what I want, I, what I think. Is of the balancing, because of course, we have to, we, we can't do both, so where we can't do both, in my view, the API community. Is the, the higher priority, so that's why I was saying, you know, which I think was slightly different from what, um, Commissioner Garcia was saying. About only moving certain things, I was saying, take that whole API community up in the north. And move it to East County, because even though there were Rancho Penasquitos people who said, we want to be coastal, to me, that's a lower priority than keeping that API community whole. Up there, and dealing with the population issue, so that was, that was my reasoning of, of that section.
And I do want to encourage commissioners, that kind of exchange is very useful. Not so much in terms of obtaining agreement, but identifying the different aspects. And which for a commissioner takes a priority in terms of getting to a final map, and that's the only time. I'll, I would use the word priority, all right, um, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, Commissioner Serbin, Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, and just to add to that point, um, when I look at the map, a community like Claremont Mesa, which is basically. Pretty much coastal, or some of the communities, I mean, we've been trying to make all these trade-offs in order to. Um, try to respond to what we've heard is an API community that is actually, you know, like spans a very big area. But when you look at the map, they're really constant, there's a concentration. In, in, I mean, there's a real concentration in a certain area, and they're a little bit, you know, I don't know that there's, that they're that compact. And that, you know, geographically compact, um, in all the areas that they claim, and I, I, you know, so. Again, we have to balance these things, and we have to draw a map that meets all of the criteria. Um, and I, I feel like we're, we're trying really hard to do that, but some of these. You know, incredible deviations that we're getting are because we're contorting the map. Um, to respond to, um, to these requests. And, you know, we have to do our best, nu- number one, to, to maintain the integrity of these coys. But if we ha- if we have to split them up or create two separate coys or whatever, we can do that, that's at our discretion. And I, I think we need to be a little bit more open-minded and more flexible, and, and I know this is, and Commissioner Dustle mentioned this. I, I know that, um, we went through this this morning, and we talked about it. But part of what has, is happening now too, is the fact that we decided as a commission. That El Cajon was gonna stay in the BIPOC community, if we, you know, had we gone a different route. Some of these knock-on effects mu- might not have occurred, so just pointing out that we have made some. Tough decisions, and I think we can, we will continue to have to make some tough decisions.
Commissioner, well, Commissioner Serbin, do you want Alex to speak first? Because that will be addressing what you're concerned about, or do you want to be responding and continuing this discussion, I'm happy either way?
I'd just like to thank Commissioner, or Vice Chair, um, Garcia for pointing out that we did decide on El Cajon as a commission. And from what I remember of what happened earlier, what our decision was as to Mira Mesa and Penasquitas had just as much support. As what we did for El Cajon, so I'm, I, I'm, I'm shocked that we're, we're revisiting. Uh, Mira Mesa and Penasquitas, when it's seeming, when, when, when we're speaking about El Cajon as if it's decided.
I mean. Okay, let me, let me.
El Cajon's decided.
Let me, let me try to diffuse.
Been decided to, because we had the same amount of unanimity on that.
I understand, and let me, let me try to diffuse that situation. The focus right now should not be on whether one summary statement or another had maximum support. The key right now is take advantage of those discussions, which led to what we understood at the time. To be a majority by whatever, by varying levels, on some of the comments that were discussed. And now we try to address them as best we can, using Flo's capabilities, to move towards a final map. I would not recommend revisiting, reopening, or other word wise revising. Issues without statutory-based criteria being applied. But since population is such a key item, I think it's constructive to have that discussion to a point. Once that discussion reaches a certain point, I do think, to be fair, we need to bear in mind. What we've already discussed and what we had in effect agreed in principle. But because in particular, we're trying to get this map formulated, and it's now four fifty-four PM. I do want to encourage some open-mindedness, I'll say, rather than any kind of firm action about reopening. With that, let me turn to Alex.
Thank you, Sherwin. I'm gonna show my screen, I did not update the PDFs per se, um, but I do just want to walk through this real briefly. Um, so this is where we stand, and Black Mountain Ranch has a population of about sixteen thousand. So if you move that into District Three. That's putting District Three very near zero percent deviation, at zero point one six. And the, conversely then, putting, um, District Four, um, would have, uh. Yeah, let me get back to the map. Excuse me. So you can see that that would help things, um, that would get us down to roughly ten percent. But the issue here is, then, those are, um, resolved. But then we have one and five being the lowest and the highest, back to what Commissioner Chen said, and I. And I think if we are focusing on that, there is gonna be, it's gonna be very hard now, solve the middle, but now we have two. A north and a south district that, you know, are not solved, and we're after gonna work back in the middle again, so if I may. While we were on break, we looked at the result of what you all discussed before the break. And we moved past that, and if I have the permission of the IRC in general and Chair Bane, I would. Show this to you, because I think it would get some reactions, and also get to the point that we've all been making, there are things that you guys agreed on. And I don't know though if we're gonna be able to do all of them, but I think what we have produced in the break gets at a lot of them, and I'd like to see the reaction, if that's all right.
With the understanding that this falls into the category of brainstorming, springboarding, or anything short of a formal, formal proposal. Uh, Margarita, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's okay to me, and I, and I also wanted to point this out. That the way the commission is proceeding now, without formal motions and votes. And less than nine, but always a majority sense of the commission. Is to provide the flexibility you need to get this done. If we were proceeding by motion, we'd have to be reconsidering those motions, undoing those motions, et cetera. So while I think everybody, it's what I hear, has a set of principles in mind. The purpose of this process is to, you, you have a lot going on here, to give you all flexibility, so. I, I just wanted, there's been no formal vote on any of this.
Right, thank you for that note, very worthwhile, Alex, are you ready?
Yes, I am, so I'm gonna reset just a second here, and look at the map one more time, and we're gonna see. Draft map thirteen A with pink boundaries, and where we ended with the break. In colored polygons. And this includes everything that was discussed, now we know that that got us to eighteen percent deviation, it was no good, so I'm gonna remove that and put in. What we worked on, looks a little messier, because you can see all the blocks, but I'll zoom into these areas. And the idea was to resolve the, the deviation and get it down below ten percent. So, one of the first things, um, that was needed was to allow for. Right where Commissioner Inman started was to understand that. Between the green district, District Two, and the yellow district, there needed to be some change, so. Putting Kearney Mesa and Sarah Mesa into the East County District, that was, that was done. That helped the, the population between those two, but we still had an issue. With District Two being too high. And we didn't want to make a change with El Cajon, because that was decided upon, so thinking about what other district could take. On something from District Two, that would be District One. District One then would have been overpopulated because of the change for Coronado. So I know this isn't perfect, and this is the trade-offs, but we put Coronado. And the portion of downtown San Diego back into the coastal district, the purple district, that allowed. District One in blue to take on a portion of District Two in green, and that is specifically the skyline Paradise Hills. Planning area right here. And then moving north has kept what was decided upon, presumably, you know, with Mira Mesa and Rancho Penasquitos. Keeps that in the coastal district, now I know we didn't talk about this a hundred percent, but it was something we heard yesterday, and we've, uh. All heard about it, the idea of keeping Elephant Forest, Harmony Grove together, let me turn on the boundaries that were provided to us. Real quickly. It's a little bit larger than the CDP, or since it's designated place itself, but it's. Um, right here in green, Harmony Grove, and then the purple, that's a little hard to see right there, larger Elephant Forest, that was desired to be in one district together. So that was put into District Four. And then, we didn't change anything up in Northeast County. The only problem was, we were still having, uh, an issue with. Population of District Five being overpopulated, and the yellow district in East County being underpopulated. This area of unincorporated Escondido is about six thousand seven hundred, and we moved that back into East County, it's unincorporated. Um, and I just want to quickly show what the statistics look like. Bear with me. That gets us to seven point six percent, and this is what the individual districts look like. So, as you look at that, I'll just reiterate, we kept El Cajon in the green district. And made the moves of Rancho San Diego and unincorporate areas around El Cajon to District Three. We maintained that Mira Mesa, Rancho Penasquitos, Black Mountain Ranch, Torrey. Uh, Highlands was moved into the coastal district. We have Northeast County Indian Reservations Tribal Areas moved into District Five. The one thing that got left out and had to change to allow those moves to make was that Coronado. Was put into the coastal district rather than District One.
And the, and Alex, the one other piece is that unincorporated area around Escondido moved back into District Three.
Correct.
Let me just clarify that to make sure we've got that, so, Alex John, you're saying that from that idea. Those are the two things in the summary statements that you couldn't work into this map. Coronado and unincorporated Escondido.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, um, I want to leave that map up for a moment, I do not have any hands, now I do, um. I think it would be useful to talk about this for a minute, uh, I invite commissioners to provide thoughts on that, but even better. Uh, your substantive thoughts about whether this is worth moving forward. Uh, in discussion, and if so, what kind of factors are on your mind related to it, Commissioner Dustle? Commissioner Inman, Commissioner Diaz, Commissioner Dustle.
I think this looks really good, um, my, I was one of the people who wanted Coronado in District One, but because of, um. Population ish- issues, and so I'm totally fine with, now that this is under ten percent for the, for the whole map, I think it, it. It, it gets to all our major issues that we talked about before lunch, so I really like it, I'd like to move forward with it, thank you.
Good, Commissioner Inman?
Um, I, uh, echo, uh, Commissioner Dustle, if you could zoom in around the convoy area in Hillcrest. Just so we can verify some things, the one sixty-three, uh, isn't splitting anything in Hillcrest, correct, no, it's not. That convoy district.
Right here.
Could be moved into D two without.
While, while we're on this, um, Alex, could we zoom, uh, the Hillcrest, I, idea was on my mind too, could we zoom in on Hillcrest?
Yeah, um, I'm not a hundred percent familiar, can you please guide me?
It's just south of where you're at right now.
Okay, thank you, oh yeah, right here, and I'll turn on the neighborhoods just to see if that helps us. But yeah, Hillcrest right there, pretty much. Or am I looking at the wrong Hillcrest?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're good there. And, uh, other than that, I, I, I like it, I guess I, I would ask the commissioner if he still wanted to move convoy around. Because I don't think that, I think that that's feasible, um, uh, even within, uh, this map, it's not going to affect the deviation, so. Uh, so thank you, and I think that this does accomplish a lot of the, um, tasks that we were trying to do, so again, appreciate the efforts of Flo.
Before you yield, uh, the floor, could you, or, uh, we don't need to revisit from your perspective, the. Unincorporated areas at Escondido.
I, I think that that's a trade-off, and, you know, if you look across any map with boundaries. Streets are used to draw lines between neighborhoods, you know, it happens not just outside, or in and around Escondido. It's happening throughout San Diego, it's happening around, uh, El Cajon, it's happening everywhere, so. It's an issue, and if we can correct it, that would be nice, but. Uh, Alcohomet, it's happening everywhere, so it's an issue, and if we can correct it, that would be nice, but. It, it's an issue that happens everywhere we draw a line, neighbors are separated.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Diaz, then Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner Larson. Commissioner Diaz.
Um, yeah, I think this map looks way better than the other map, and I would support this changes we made. Um, in North County to balance out that, the population. Um, going back to Commissioner Inman's, um, point about, um, convoy, if there is a, a way we could keep that. In District Two, that's great, um, I do wanna point out that that other lower triangle is, uh, called Birdland, the neighborhood, and it's, uh. Um. Actually, there's a, a large, it's not as residential as the other part of Sarah Mesa, I know it's still considered Sarah Mesa Planning Area. But that's, um, where the, if there's a lot of hospitals, there's the hospitals and the juvenile detention centers there, and, uh. Just wanted to be aware that, 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 that's why it looks the way it is right now, it's kind of like an odd shape. Um, but that's, there's a, there's a bunch of, uh, commercial and also. Uh, government facilities there, just wanna point that out.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Brown.
Yep, I like that map, and, uh, I was the one that was kinda pushing for the, um. Unincorporated Escondido to be brought into Escondido, but I think it's okay, they'll be alright, they'll deal with it. So, I think this looks good, we should go forward with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Larson, and just update, followed by Commissioner Servin and Commissioner Hanson, Commissioner Larson.
Well, to all, I think this is the best map yet, uh, it really seems to hit most of what's required. And makes some very nice trade offs. I, uh, don't think that convoy belongs in the East County, think the East County will be upset with that. But, uh, we may have to live with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Servin.
Oh, you're on mute, Commissioner Servin.
Thank you, sorry, um, just going back to Commissioner Diaz's point about Birdland, if it's, if the population is negligible, it makes more sense for Birdland to be. Um, in the, uh, green district instead of the yellow district. Um. Uh, and I'd, I'd like the commission to maybe consider that as, as an, as another change in addition to the convoy change. Um, can we, can I, can I see the, the eastern edge of like the Alcohomet and the surrounding, please? Yes, thank you, yes.
Let me. John, could, I, I don't know how available it is, but if you can get a population figure for Birdland, that would be useful.
Yeah, it'll give, it'll give me a minute, I have to draw it as opposed to pull it up.
That's what I wanted to ask. Commissioner Servin, please continue.
Okay, thank you, and then, um. And, and then, okay, good, I just wanted to get a close up of what that looked like, and then I just wanted to look up again at, um. PQ Mira Mesa, Black Mountain Ranch, how are we doing that, please?
Okay.
Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
Okay, so Commissioner, just an update again, Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner Pons, then Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Hanson.
I, I can't help but repeat that I feel absolutely blindsided by this map. The people that I represent in this decision have sat quietly by, because all of the maps that they were shown. Gave them the impression that they didn't have to fight to stay with the coastal communities. And it changed at this point is, I, I mean, I'm embarrassed. To face this community after this, I, I just, I realize it may have to happen, but I feel blindsided.
Can we see on the map, the section you're talking about?
And Commissioner Hanson, if you can also mention specifically, I think I know what they are, but I, I'd love to have it in the record. Of which specific communities you're talking about.
I'm talking about the Claremont and Claremont Mesa, which is between Highway fifty-two on the north. And then Balboa, which is the gateway to the beach community, runs right through the middle of it. And then the other side is the southern half of Claremont that goes all the way down to. Mission Beach. If that's not coastal, I don't know what is. And I, I, I just think it's, I, I, I don't know how I would explain this to the people that live in my community.
And Commissioner Hanson, I, I do want to note that, uh, your earlier comment, um, I'm keenly aware. Of what this community has been, uh, or how this community has been discussed. In other redistricting circles and conversations. While we, of course, can't take responsibility for what else is going on, I think it's very useful to be informed and aware of that. Uh, I'll go back to the earlier comment that, uh, Margarita offered, whatever the numbers involved. I know we're all keenly aware, these are real people, and even if we're talking about small numbers. Everyone, everyone deserves to have their issues attended to and discussed, but. That said, um, I more than understand how serious you're taking it, and since I'm not hearing. Uh, other issues for contention so far. I'd be willing to extend the discussion after this current round of conversation to see if there's a way to address some of that. I'm very keenly aware that the challenge we have is, of course, the large population involved in those two areas. But I just wanted to reassure, we're not going to ignore it, we're, we're going to talk about it, and I hope to have a constructive conversation. I have Commissioner Pons, Commissioner Brown, Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Could I respond to what you just said for a minute?
Sure.
The response of the Claremont community to the redistricting plans by the city. Indicates the level of concern and awareness in this community for redistricting. The reason they didn't respond to us was that we tacitly showed them through a series of fif- fifteen maps. Up until today. That met their needs, and to change it now after they can't say a word is not right.
Okay, Commissioner, I wanna be very careful on the question of assumptions, but I'm, appreciate you making those comments, Commissioner Pons.
Uh, yes, you know, not moving Coronado down to District One, notwithstanding, and. The comment by Commissioner Hanson about the coastal, uh, communities, I think this is a pretty good start. What I wanna hold in abeyance is to wait and see the results of the RPV analysis, to see what it does to. The other districts, because yesterday they gave us, uh, thirteen A gave us, uh, D one, one hundred percent, D two, eighty percent. D three, zero percent, and four and five was forty percent, so. It would be interesting to see what the RPV analysis on this iteration says. But it looks good, it looks pretty much balanced, but I think the deciding factor. I think for me would be what the RPV analysis presents.
And Commissioner Pons, thank you very much for that, because it is important to keep in mind commissioners. Until we adopt a final draft map to move forward, we are going to have to keep our minds open and available. To what we hear on RPV slash ability to electric analysis, as well as the various legal analyses. I can assure you that our experts have been told they're going to have a, probably a very nice weekend. Looking at some of these issues, but my intent is to get that information to you as early as possible. And also posted so that the public can review. Commissioner Brown, then Commissioner, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, um, John, can we wait for those two commissioners, or?
Yes, I just had those pop, the Birdland population.
Ah, okay, why not, give, give it to us now.
Seven thousand two hundred and thirty-six.
Excellent, thank you for that. Uh, Commissioner Brown.
Okay, a couple of comments, uh, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Pons, I was looking for the RPV. Results of these before we move forward with anything really, and if those fit, it looks like a pretty good map, um. But with Commissioner Hanson, you know, there, there's a Claremont and there's a Claremont Mesa. So, I'm just not sure by looking at the map on my screen here. I see Claremont Mesa shown on there, but where is Claremont area? Is it right down in? Where the cursor is right now, or is it further south?
It's that entire district, Claremont is the town around Balboa Avenue. The Mesa is close, is. You go through that, a canyon when you go west on Claremont, and there are several plateaus there, and then. The business section and the area closest to eight oh five is technically the Mesa. As opposed to, you go all the way down to sea level in the west.
Okay. And what's the population of that? Is it something where we can take a portion of that?
Well, it would be better than nothing, but.
Cause Linda Vista isn't Claremont.
No, Linda Vista is a separate community separated by canyons.
Let, let me ask, let me ask, keep the conversation going, but I will ask John if you can look up if there are population figures you have. For both Claremont Mesa and also for Claremont, uh, having gotten lost in this neighborhood several times looking for soccer field. I can tell you the terms are sometimes used interchangeably, uh, but I certainly respect Commissioner, Commissioner Hanson's expertise on it. And John, I would like just, when we have a moment, but let me take Co-Vice Chair Garcia and Commissioner Diaz first, reset.
So, um, I, I appreciate that, uh, what Flo did in trying to find, um, a better solution for us, and I, I do see that this map. Gives us a lower overall deviation, but I have to say, I feel exactly the same way as Commissioner Hanson does. Um, about moving Claremont Mesa and Linda Vista into a district that is not coastal, if you're, if you've spent. Any, any time in this area, you look across the way and Pacific, the, the bay, Mission Bay is there, Pacific Beach, uh, it's. This is a coastal community, and if you zoom out and you see that we are take, we, we've gone further east. To create what is, what we're calling, for some reason, a coastal community, and we're actually. Leaving a coastal community out of this district doesn't make any sense to me, and I mean, we've, again. These are the kinds of contortions that we've made in the past, where even we were gonna take the east side of Solana Beach, which is a coastal town. Um, out of the coastal community in order to accommodate, uh, um, you know, a koi, so I. Th- this also, um, is bothersome to me, and I see that we have. Communities that are much farther east, farther away from the coast, uh, you. That are in the coastal community, um, and I guess I'd like to see, um, so two other things. I'd like to see the C VAP, the V A P and the C VAP numbers, I'm sure that they, they run, they ran those on this, and but be, oh, well, we can do that, and I also wanted to look. Closely at what happened in District One and understand. Um. Why the change in the Bay Bridge, and, I mean, I'm sorry, in Coronado. So what happened in District, can we zoom in on that, and Alex, can you explain that?
Alex, if you wanna zoom, I can say, uh, I don't know what, whatever is easiest for you, but. The result of, um, this is sort of one of those cascading effects, and it happened where, uh. District Two had to, ex, with District Two extending up, it had to give. To District One, and what it gave is Skyline Paradise Hills, which is highly, highly populated, around seventy thousand or so, I think. As a result, the core, uh.
Could it not have, could it not have taken on so much community in the north, or we needed to, to do that? In other words.
Alex, you wanna go through step by step?
Uh, yeah, I can give my best shot, so I'm gonna bring up, these are the stats for what we called V ten coming out of the break. And, oh, I reran them to, one second. Original. What we want, okay, remember we had that eighteen percent number, uh. District Two is way overpopulated in this.
Right.
So, meanwhile, District Four is underpopulated, so. Trying to figure out how to get District Two more population, we were looking in, um. Or sorry, less, so giving up some area, but District Four was gonna take some on, so that was Coronado. So that would get it back up, um, to where it needed to be, but that means, you know, we can see if, if it takes on Coronado. That's about twenty-two thousand, now you're way under for District One, you're at like fifty-five to sixty thousand under. So District One needed to take something on, and the place to do that was District Two, because it was over. So it's kind of a cyclical thing where. District Four could come take from District One, so that District One could extend and take some from Two, because. Two and Three had issues, cause. You can't make District Three much bigger, we already don't wanna extend it farther, but it needs population, so that's kinda the, the thing now.
And Alex, I just want, I just wanna confirm that, when, when you say, you said. District One was way under, so there was a need to take from District Two, that was Paradise Hills and Skyline, those neighborhoods?
Right.
Okay, good.
So do we have the V A P and the C VAP for this new? And the newest, newest iteration, this?
Right, let me clear a couple, so we're not, so I'm not getting confused, so we're not getting confused, so. Let me set back up, so yeah, the one we were looking at, the C VAP for that. And I think, I don't know off the top of my head, but I bet John knows, it's pretty close r- right now existing to about fifty-one.
It's, yeah, that's, uh, pretty much.
No change almost, yeah.
Exact.
So District Two on this map is, which, is that the rural East County?
Uh, no, that, this is District Two here is the green one.
That's the BIPOC.
Three is the yellow East County.
Well, so what's gonna happen there? Look what happened to the BIPOC community there.
I think it's.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Actually similar, but.
Oh, it must be District Four, District Four is the green.
Correct.
Oh, what happened? We, we messed up, we. We lost our BIPOC.
Alex, can you go? I, I think that's actually not quite the case, if we look at the C VAP, I'm not sure, I don't know, but I. I believe that.
Okay.
If you look at the district, if you look at thirteen A or whichever one we went through, and we're able to compare. The district numbers, because those I think will be the same, right, the district ID numbers. Uh, if we were able to compare the C VAP between thirteen A.
Just right, you, thirteen A?
Thirteen, yeah, the one that this was originally based off of.
Okay, yeah, give me one second.
I, I think that's the, the right comparison.
Okay, one second.
And Commissioners, while we're waiting, I'll remind that you, you have the thirteen A original chart available.
Just wanted clarification, Alex, which district is, is the green district now four or two? Oh.
It's always two in thirteen A, yep.
Okay, and all these iterations, it's two.
Correct.
Yeah.
Hey.
Okay, so thirteen A. I'm gonna try to put them side by side, just bear with me. Now let me go get the other one. Sorry, scrolling down, getting to C VAP, there we go.
So.
So the opportunities for electing a candidate of choice for the minority community gotten better with the changes.
I'm not sure that's true, is that true?
No, we wouldn't know that until the ability to elect is done, we can't make any of those determinations from the C VAP.
No, just looking at the numbers.
But the new map with the changes, is the one on top, the one below?
No, no, sorry, so the on top is thirteen A.
Yeah.
And the, on the bottom is the map we're discussing. So, you know, for looking at C VAP and District One in particular, you know, that's, uh, one thing, is the Hispanic Latino population. Fifty-two point four versus fifty-one point one, and that's all within the realm of what's existing now.
Right.
And then, I think, um.
That's what I'm looking at.
You're talking about District Two, which is green, and in thirteen A, the stats are right here. Um, compared to what it. And in thirteen A, the stats are right here, um, compared to what it is down below here. So it became slightly more white.
Majority white district. It was minority white district before. Thank you.
It was plurality white before, yeah.
Okay, um. Alex, I'll ask you to be able to call those up again if needed, but I, I think we got through that, thank you very much, Commissioner Diaz.
Um, you know. All of you know where I stood on the fir-, very first original map of map fourteen. So now this is our compromise. And I think that I really respect the opinion of, um, Commissioner Brown. And in advocating for the community, um, of Claremont. But, you know, looking at so far, what's, I mean, I guess we would have to wait for the, um. The V R A written analysis and, and that's what I'm eager to see. I, I, I am, I'm, I'm, am a little concerned, but not too concerned about Southeast San Diego portion. Um, the reason why I say that is because I, I think from past experience, uh, we've seen voting blocks strong in that, in that area. So I, I don't have any, um. Strong concerns, but I do want to see the V R A as it pans out. Encanto and Skyline are very closely related, shared history, shared economics. Uh, and, and so I just really want to emphasize that, that is a coy that we're, uh, splitting. But that's, I want to see the V R A.
And I, just for Commissioners' benefit, thank you for that, Commissioner Diaz. I was planning to call shortly on Mr. Edelson and Marguerite, if they're still with us, uh, for that. Let me take Commissioner Dostal, Commissioner Brown, and then turn to them, Commissioner Dostal.
Chairman, you may have, um, touched on what I wanted to ask is, I wanted Marguerite's opinion about, um. Uh, Commissioner Hanson's point, which is very well taken about making this change at this point. Um, so I'd like a legal, um, input on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Um, just in, just the thought, if we were to take Coronado and put it back into District one. And then in, into District four, we might be able to move Claremont, Claremont Mesa area. I don't know if that is kind of an equal exchange or not, I don't. Um, I don't think, uh, Coronado is as big as that Claremont area, but it might be.
It's a pretty, um, it's about twenty thousand for Coronado and closer to eighty thousand for the Claremont area. Uh, and I do want to mention, I don't have a number for Claremont, I only have a number for Claremont Mesa.
Yeah.
That's what we'll use based on census. Um, thank you, Commissioner Brown. Um, Marguerite? And Bruce, would you rather talk with the map up?
I, uh, Bruce, Bruce, do you want to go first?
Sure, um. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd rather, because the, the map is, is in flux. I'd like to see the chart with all the data, please. And if you could have the, the current iteration of the map statistics and then whatever the prior iteration was, that would be very helpful.
Similar to what Alex had displayed before.
Right.
Alex, can you bring those two tables back up?
Yes, let me do that.
While we're waiting on that, um, Marguerite, could I ask you if there's a brief way to address the point? That, um, Commissioner Dostal just raised?
Uh, yeah, um. I, 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 I really sympathize, I've got to say, with Commissioner Hanson's discomfort about this. Um, unfortunately, I can't fight to anything in the law. That, uh. prohibits the commission at this point from making this change. Uh, all communities were, had an equal opportunity to come in at any time. Uh, to, um. To, uh. Uh, uh, identify their, their interests and, um. Uh, uh, confirm the coastal orientation or, or any other orientation. There was an opportunity to do that, we were required to give that opportunity before maps were drafted. Actually, in seven, seven public areas. I, I do understand, and it may be a lesson learned. That, uh, what really counts is lines on the paper. But I don't believe it's a legal vulnerability at this point. Um, I, I, it's unfortunate, but it's not a legal vul- vulnerability.
Thank you for that, but I will add, uh, very firmly. That, of course, does not mean it's not within the Commission's discretion to discuss and act on that.
Absolutely.
And I will add my two cents, um, that I had really hoped, and I know the Commission had hoped. That we would have more time for public discussion once lines were put on paper.
Yes.
And we put a lot of time and effort into that. I'm not saying that excuses any course of action. I'm just noting that we certainly were aware we might face a challenge. Uh, in our work along these lines. All right, let's give the floor back to Mr. Edelson now that he's got the numbers up. And Bruce, do you want this page up or do you want the C VAP page up?
Let's, we could start with the, the C VAP. And I'd just like to be clear on which is the, the numbers for the current iteration that we were looking at. And then what had been the, the numbers from the previous one?
Sure, so thirteen A, as it was draft map thirteen A prior. And what was, uh, looked at by, uh, Christian and, uh, for the R B B and ability to elect is on the left side of my screen. And the right side is the map that we've been discussing tonight.
Okay, thank you, so that the, the map that we're, that's being discussed now, that has the Latino C VAP of fifty-one point one percent?
That is correct.
Okay, so, you know, I think is, is, to address, let's just address District one and I'll talk a little bit more about. The Voting Rights Act, but fifty-one, uh, the fifty-one point one percent, the fact that it's lower than the benchmark. Than the previous number is, is good. Because the, since you have a hundred percent electoral success in this district. We know this district elects, this district performs, this district is very effective for minority voters. So I think that I'm concerned about having numbers, particularly the Latino population, that's a little high. Since there, there is no need for additional Latino population here. Um, so I, I, I augur on the side of caution and keeping that number low. If, if not where it is now, then perhaps even a little lower than that. Because we really, as, as I said, this is not a district that needs improvement of electoral performance. It's a hundred percent right now for supervisory elections. And I think that's an important point to remember going forward. I wanted to address, I think it was to, and please forgive me if I get the, if I confuse the names. If it was Commissioner Diaz was asking about V R A analysis and I'm interested in. A particular district or that, that she may be, uh, uh, speaking about particularly.
Um, yes, so, uh, when we go back to Paradise Hills and Encanto, that originally was part of, um. District two, I guess, um, and, uh, City Council District, actually, it's always been part of C D four. Of City of San Diego, uh, very heavily, um. Uh, African-American, Latino, Filipino. Um, and very, very, um, I, I want to say. Bound by shared history, culture and econ- economics, um, in the area. So just, just wanted to point that out. And, uh, city, city elections are, I know, I don't, I know you only focused on, uh, supervisory. But I'm curious, um, how that played out. I don't think it would affect anything with this new iteration, but. That came up.
I appreciate that, I think the, the important thing is with districts beyond District one. Keeping in mind that the coalition voting in the county is very inconsistent. There is no cohesion among, uh, Asian, black and Latino voters overall. Once you get outside of District one. So this is somewhat less of a Voting Rights Act issue and more of a traditional redistricting criteria. That the communities of interest, as you, as you so well described them. But then also there's the, the Fourteenth Amendment, equal protection requirements about not cracking minority populations. Dividing them and splitting them up in ways that dilute their overall impact on the electoral process. So I think that that's less a specific Voting Rights Act issue. Since this is not a majority minority district, there is no, uh, history similar to District one. With a hundred percent electoral, electoral results in supervisory districts. I'm imagining that, to your point about city elections, that the districts are smaller, different. And they don't correspond to the supervisory elections. As a, just as an overall kind of clarifying note, you have a lot of data right now. Excuse me, about elections, frankly, I think you have more than you, than you need to have in looking at this. Uh, and that, I understand, can get pretty daunting and confusing. So for the other districts, think more about C O I's, keeping communities together. Compact minority communities, remember the compact is referring federally to minority communities. Not cracking them, not dividing Native American reservations, for example. Not using race as your main criterion. Because this, as I said, this is less of a V R A issue per se and more, um. But I look at it as Fourteenth Amendment and your state criterion. Excuse me, because you have such a, a mixed record with, um, coalition voting and a lack of cohesion. Plus, you also have situations where, uh, white majority does not vote as a block. To block, uh, minorities from electing candidates of choice, does that make sense?
Thank you for that, and I particularly appreciate Commissioner Inman not challenging the point that we have more than enough data. You know, he's got strong feelings about that. Commissioner Serbin, did you want to s- i- i- say something on this?
No, thank you, I, um, Dr. Allison answered my question, thank you.
Very good. Um. Bruce, is there anything else you wanted to address in this? Oh, I'm sorry, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, please.
I just raised my hand, you, you didn't miss me, I just raised it when you called on me, thank you. Um.
Thank, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Edelson.
Yeah, I was just going to say, just as a couple, excuse me, of overall guiding points that. When you're looking at the Voting Rights Act. Remember that the Voting Rights Act does not pick favorites among minority groups. It's do minority groups have an opportunity to elect? It's not a guarantee, there's nothing in federal law that says. You only get compliance with the Fourteenth Amendment and the Voting Rights Act with a guarantee of electoral success. Remember all these estimates, the estimates in your consultants' reports, they're estimates. They're only estimates, they're not guarantees. You have not approved a plan where they've, you've held elections under a plan. So all of this is probability and estimate. And please keep in mind, there's two key points. The Voting Rights Act does not pick favorites among minority groups. And it is not about a guarantee of electoral success. It's opportunity to elect, ability to elect. And then we all know elections can be wild card, we don't know what's going to happen in an election. So those are just some guiding points I wanted to emphasize, thank you.
West Chair Garcia, did you want to continue?
Um, yeah, I, I just, I guess what I wanted to point out was that we do have that ability to elect analysis from gross. And in the initial iteration of map thirteen with, in District two. With, uh, a white population of forty-eight point two percent. There was an eighty percent ability to elect because they predicted coalition voting. And what we don't know is that when that white population increases to fifty-two point eight percent. If that eighty percent, um, opportunity to elect is going to be maintained. So that, I think, is something that makes it, uh, troublesome for me to move forward with this map without that information. And again, I still, uh, feel very strongly about the way the coastal district was. And I even actually, it bothers me to call it the coastal district because it, it seems to, there are, there's a coastal district north of it. And there's a coastal district south of it. And, um, and a- again, this coastal district was one that we kind of accepted in many ways from coy, uh, input. Without, uh, revising too much. It's one that I've not ever really been very comfortable with because I don't actually think Encinitas Coastal District has all that much in common with Coronado. And, you know, uh, all the way south, it, it never made sense to me, but nevertheless, um. Taking what I believe to be very much coastal districts that are just on the other side of I five. Um, and moving them out of a coastal district, um, does, is something I'm also not comfortable with. And they may not be, it, it may not work because of contiguous issues. But I'm, notice, I think, if I remember correctly, the Claremont, um. Population is. Oh, no, it's not, it's not, I was thinking it, it's not, it's the, the two, um, the trade-off would be between. I think Mira Mesa, which was seventy-seven thousand and Claremont, which I think was around seventy-five thousand or seventy, right around the same. And again, those are district, that, those are areas, one that's very close to the ocean and one that's not quite so close. But, um, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Mr. Edelson?
Thank you, I, I, I mean, I, I, um, trying to get my, my hand around the, the geographical issues. Uh, and the, but putting that aside, the distinction between the forty-eight point two percent and the fifty-two point eight percent. And yes, there could be some legal significance or some sig- electoral significance. I think that given the, the, the lack of cohesion and the, the lack of uniform, um, white-black voting. That creating districts that can have, let's say, that eighty percent electoral success that's in your consultant's report. That often is, and here I think that that could work very well be, that's a policy choice. It's less something that you absolutely have to do, like for District one. Keep it, it's effective in the benchmark, has to be equally effective here. So that minority voting, uh, rights are not impaired. That's not as true in the, your other configurations. So, uh, whether or not that four percent plays in, is really impossible to know for sure. Without the, the analysis. Uh, but a- again, that the, keeping the number, whether you wanted to keep it at fifty-two percent, for example. That that can be, or forty-eight percent white population as a policy choice in deciding. How probable do you want this district to be as far as giving, um, minority voters an opportunity to elect candidates of choice? In the supervisory election.
And I want to point out something, um. Uh, Bruce, that was in your memo. That were, the, the ability to elect analysis is being conducted. On statewide partisan elections. We have no idea. How the voters, what choices the voters in this district would make in the supervisory election. And we can't even guess because this district is constructed. Of parts of two, large parts of two different supervisory districts. So we cannot do that analysis. So you need to, the, the ability to elect is not comparable. To a supervisory election, the behavior of the voters is different. It's because it's colored by partisanship. And you could get in, you, you could find high levels of co- cohesion. In a Democrat versus Republican elected, that just disappears in a non-partisan election. So Bruce, I'm just making your point, that's not my point, that's your point. But I am supporting you that because of this, there's discretion here. You know, there is discretion, but the have, noting the change is a, um. Is important. But the, have, noting the change is a, is important. It is a change.
I, I agree. I, I appreciate that. And I view that, you know, we're, we're a legal team. That's the opinion of the legal team, absolutely. And I, I really have to do. Oh, absolutely. I have to stress that point, that nonpartisan elections are different than partisan elections. There's often more drop off. People don't necessarily vote at the same level for nonpartisan elections. You don't have the, the lure of party and the, the, all the incidents that come with it. So that's a, a factor here too. And that's why I think, you know, I'm so keen on with District One that basically, don't mess with District One. District One is, is good the way it is in general. Yes.
Good. All right. Um, Alex, can we take the screen down, please? All right. Um, it is five forty-seven, Commissioners. I am preparing to request a motion. Since I think the conversation is being exhausted at the brainstorming level, I would ask Commissioners in considering that motion to frame it in a way that lets us have the most efficient but still a substantial discussion that we need to have. But first off, I haven't seen, I don't see any other requests for the floor. So I'd like to start framing the motion the right way. And because of the importance of this, I want to make sure we get it right. Let's start from the point Marguerite had raised earlier. Marguerite, if we are working from quote unquote, a new map, do we need to have a vote on that map first as the map we're working from? And then have a discussion about moving that map forward?
My recommendation is that at some point there'd be a formal action to move a map forward.
Absolutely. But could we, in doing so, just say we're working from the map, I think Alex identified it as thirteen A V ten or whatever nomenclature we use. If we're moving that map forward, we're fine.
Yeah.
I would ask it, can Flo actually use MAP thirteen A? Because we've approved that map and do the changes from there.
Alex John, is that a possibility?
Yeah, can you clarify, Commissioner Inman? Is it just, or do you mean something else?
No, I, I mean, take thirteen A. And then you go through the steps that created thirteen V eleven.
The, the mock-up one we did over lunch.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Diaz?
Just a clarifying question. So the V ten, thirteen A V ten is what we just saw right now?
No.
No.
No, I'll clarify. Sorry for the issue. But yeah, thirteen A is kind of what started today, obviously. And then we took all your comments that you discussed before the break and implemented them. And we call it thirteen A ten. And that was the eighteen point seven percent deviation. And then we were looking over the lunch hour and said, maybe we can keep a lot of this, but we need to make some changes. That is what thirteen A eleven is. And that's what we've been discussing.
Thirteen A eleven is where I think if we could word it like that, instead of going back to the thirteen A, I think it would be confusing. Because we didn't want the original thirteen A. Am I making any sense? So can't we just say we're working from thirteen A V eleven? Or do we, I guess this gets back to the chair's question.
I think, I think what we want to do is, and I, I'm supporting Commissioner Inman, is take some sort of formal action to get us from thirteen A, which was your last formal action to thirteen A V eleven.
Couldn't we, Marguerite, frame it just that way, that we've, we are instructing Flo to, in order to move map, how would we do this? What I'm trying to get at is we instruct Flo to implement thirteen A V eleven onto thirteen A. And that that resulting map is the one that moves forward to December ninth. Is that getting towards the kind of formulation we need?
Yes, um, I, I, I would be more comfortable if there were a listing. And I, I don't think it needs to be anything more than really just a list of the changes that were made.
I think we can list as bullets.
Yeah, just list them. It's gonna be what, eight, ten?
We'll be able to list them. We'll have that and can note them.
No, but do we need to list that right now for the motion?
I put it in the motion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So.
As we only have majority buy-in on a couple of those. So let's stick them all in a single motion and, and move it forward if that's the will of the commission.
Barbara?
Chair, would it be helpful to bring up the original motions that we sent out and then have Flo confirm what was kept and what was removed and what, and use that as a guide?
Meaning, well, Alex, John?
I like that. Yeah, yeah, we can amend. Yeah, that part.
Okay, so let's bring that up.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Apologies. Just give me one second to pull that up.
And Commissioners, just a reminder, this is to formulate the motion. Once the motion's on the table, we will have a discussion. All right. Now, uh, so I think first we have to formulate the motion at the top.
Okay, let me do this, let me do this a different way.
Let's, let's, I think, working from a Word document, make the easiest.
My apologies, Chair. I didn't give Nicole a heads up that I was gonna propose this.
Commissioners, I'm having some trouble with my screen. I'll get it cleared up in a second. But is anyone requesting the floor right now? Okay, thank you. There we go. Okay. Um, would anyone want to take a chance at formulating or should we turn, sorry, Commissioner Diaz?
Yeah, I'd like to motion, formulate the motion.
Okay, hold on one second. Let's Okay, at dictation speed, please.
Uh, move to adopt, or not adopt, sorry. Move, move forward with MAP thirteen A with the following adjustments.
As shown in
Yes, as shown in thirteen A V eleven.
Comma specifically, colon?
Yes, specifically, and can we just refer to, are we going to strike the, the language from the, starting with each area? Is that how you want to proceed? Because I could, I could do that. But not sure how that would look in the motion. Specifically, amend the, actually, keeping Escondido as part of North County, not including the unincorporated areas. Sorry, not including incorporated areas surrounding the city of Escondido, because.
Let's pa, let's pause there and let them type. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, did you want to say something?
Well, I wouldn't put that there. I, I would strike in MAP thirteen A. I would just start with keeping Escondido as part of the North County, including, um, the unincorporated areas north, the tribal areas to the east. Everything else that it says and then just say, and, and say, and and remove, actually thirteen A didn't have those unincorporated areas of, um, southeast of, of Escondido. So we don't even need to refer to that, as I recall. Am I right about that? So I leave it as it is, keeping Escondido as part of North County. Uh, as part of North County, including the unincorporated areas to the north. Oh, well, actually, do we need, what do we need to say here now that I think about it?
All you need to do is talk about the tribal.
The changes. Okay, there you go.
That's all you need to include is those tribal areas.
Would it be helpful to have, I'm sorry, Chair, would it be helpful to have Flo identify what they, what they actually did to get us to this point?
I'd be comfortable suggesting that. Sonia, that's okay?
Yes, that would make it a lot easier.
Alex or John?
Uh, yeah, I can jump in. I, I concur with Commissioner Inman, keeping Escondido in. And the change was, um, expanding District Five to include unincorporated areas in North County primarily Indian reservations, tribal areas.
Excluding.
Including, uh,
Borrego Springs.
Mario or Spring.
Excluding Borrego.
Borrego Springs up to, but not including Borrego Springs.
And again, I want to be, I want to be a little careful with level of detail here and especially justification. Um, Marguerite, because we've got the specific reference in the top to V eleven, I'm assuming we only have to spell this out as a certain level of detail in the motion.
Yeah, actually here, if, if we're using, if we're starting from MAP thirteen A, we didn't even have to say keeping Escondido in. Basically, we're gonna say in District Five, expand to include all the tribal, North County tribal reservations up to Borrego Springs to the east. Borrego Springs, whatever.
And one thing that Commissioner Inman highlighted that we would clean up is that we were splitting a little bit of the planning areas that we could also, so also, I don't know how to say, maintaining or preserving the boundaries of planning areas.
Okay.
In the, something along that line.
Comma, preserving the boundaries of the.
I think it's desert.
Community, well, you could just say generally community plan areas.
Yeah. Late here. I apologize.
And Alex, if you could, or, or John, if you could restate it, I just want to make sure, um, that Nicole can capture this.
I'm just reading it right now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think that reads, what's highlighted reads well. Yeah.
We just add the word not to include Borrego Springs. Is it right now? It says, yeah.
Looks good.
Do we need to keep that for the record, for the motion?
I don't think for the motion, because we've got it in the record for the proceedings.
Yeah, so we, we could just. Okay. And so go by each district. I think that would be the right format. District, I guess it would be District Two for this now.
District Three is East County on this map.
I think in District Three works with regard to these changes.
So for this area, Alex?
I like the first part of it. Maintain East County as depicted in MAP thirteen A with additions of unincorporated areas around Alcohona, including Bia de Oro and Spring Valley planning areas. I think period, because the next part of the sentence gets at what we just wrote above.
Yeah.
Sonia or others, would it be more accurate to just start with add unincorporated areas? Since we already know we're maintaining East County as depicted in MAP thirteen A?
Yes.
Sonia, that make sense?
Yes, and feel free to jump in, Commissioner Garcia.
Now, in District Three, we're also moving that area of, uh, current, what was it, Kearney? We're adding an area into there as well.
Yeah, that is true. If we're gonna speak in terms of districts, so it would be, add Kearney Mesa and Sarah Mesa.
I think it might be helpful to have, is there a way we could just have a screenshot of the map? Because I'm, I'm just trying to remember all the changes.
Alex has them in front of him.
Sonia, I'd suggest we, um, let's get this written down first. And then we can review the map.
Then I, I can't even do, I can't.
Okay.
What we're talking about, so.
Kearney Mesa and Sarah Mesa are already in District Three.
Not in, not in MAP thirteen A. They were part of, uh, the District Four in thirteen A.
Okay.
And what about convoy and the, where was convoy in all this?
Convoy, I think, and I can, if we need to, I can bring up the map here, but I believe that is part of Kearney Mesa. So that is, um, I think that the IRC's discretion if, if Kearney Mesa gets split or not.
I believe the intent was to leave that with the coastal, central coastal district.
So would it be add Kearney Mesa with the exception of the convoy area into District Three?
I believe that's correct.
But we'll need to be precise about what we mean by convoy area.
South of the fifty-two.
East of the eight oh five, west of the one sixty-three.
Correct.
But I, is it including or excluding? I thought we just said excluding.
It is excluding. Excluding. It is excluding. Excluding, yeah. I mean, the ranch. That's a bowl. We go from five to three to.
Well, we should put them in order, but right now they're not in order.
But yeah.
One.
We can go through this because it's working from the statements. Yeah.
The Rancho Penosquitos needs to be added also, right? Or removed from District Three.
I think we maybe want to say that in terms of District Four will be added to it. Yeah.
Now do. Do you want to do the District Four language now?
Sure. Wait.
I wasn't, I was, I was just trying to state that maybe when we get.
Right. No, thank you, Alex. Sonia? Cognizant you'd like to see the map.
Going back to District Three, I just want to make sure we're talking about the right, um, for East County, making sure that the border, the western border. I'm sorry. I'm trying to refer to the border of D one, but I I, it's just hard without seeing the visual up in front of us of V, V eleven. But there's more there that we have to put for District Three as far as the changes that were made. So we have Rancho, San Diego, Bia de Oro that we took out and put back in, back to the east. And then we have what else? There's something missing. I can't put my finger on it.
Well, it's covered by the two districts. It's, um, Well, it's covered by the two districts, it's, um, La Presa.
Uh, in. The Spring Valley, Rancho San Diego and, uh, Bia de Oro are Mount Helix, yeah, that area.
But we've been talking about Rancho San Diego and La Presa, they're covered in this language.
Right, okay, got it. We're ready to move on to the next.
Yeah.
We'll stop. For South County.
So I think here we stay in District One, correct? And John or Alex, you, you want to describe the change for District One that you had on V eleven?
Yes, I can, um. I think, yeah, to stick with the, the way we're talking about adding to districts, we'll say that, um. Skyline Paradise Hills. Add Skyline Paradise Hills to District One.
Skyline Paradise Hills, um, i- 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 is there a community plan area there or, uh, what?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, community.
That's a community plan area, yep, it's a single, um, community plan area with a dash in between, based on the San GIS data. Thanks.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Then we add Coronado.
I think that was Coronado is not.
No, Coronado stays where it was in thirteen A, which is the coastal District Four. So the only change, um, in terms of adding to District One is, is what we have stated there.
And what about La Presa?
That is being, um, given, so to speak, to the East County District, so that's kind of included in the District Three, um, line item. If that makes sense.
Oh, good.
So just to confirm, this is Barbara, we're removing the considering all the input received on the Coronado component down here, correct?
Right, with the understanding that we've kept that document, which we will obviously need. I probably should have confirmed that earlier, but I, I'm certainly have it.
Yeah. You saved a new document, so now we're in District Three?
Uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, District Four.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Right, um, and, yeah.
Alex, go ahead.
Yep, just reading it, um, that's pretty good, we could expand and just say it, if we want to be very specific, it's up to you guys, it's Mayor Mesa, Rancho Penosquitos. Black Mountain Ranch. And Torrey Highlands.
Hold on, let's let them, let the Nicole catch that, good. Um, I think we take out the and after Mayor Mesa then.
Yep, that is good.
And move should change to add.
Good catch.
Um, what are we doing with, uh, Harmony Grove and Elephant Forest?
Her, uh, Elephant Forest was already in District Four in map thirteen A, but we should write down that. District Four, uh, Harmony Grove was added to District Four, and that maybe could be another line item, yep.
Harmony Grove and Elephant Forest?
Elephant Forest was already in District Four, the addition is Harmony Grove and you could, um, if needed, it could be, you know, surrounding unincorporated, because there is some. Unincorporated between those two census designated places, I guess it's all unincorporated, so to speak, but in between the census designated places.
I think it's called Eden Valley, the larger community.
Yeah, Eden Valley, north of Harmony Grove.
Alex? It's not the entire San De Gito. Community plan area though, that, right?
Uh.
I don't believe it is, because that would be, that would cause population issues, but I just want to make.
I'm double checking right now.
Sure that we. Because these specific areas. Harmony Grove, Elephant Forest, they don't have, they're not contiguous with each other, there's unincorporated areas, well, they're all unincorporated, but there's area in between. Um, I just want to make sure we're clear. How, where that position is in the map. If, Alex, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do, I, I can try to state it a different way, like the same.
Okay, yeah.
De Gito, yeah, planning areas is quite large, it includes, uh, Harmony Grove, Elephant Forest, Rancho Santa Fe, Fairbanks Ranch, and some. Unincorporated county to the east of Rancho Santa Fe, so. Most of the San De Gito planning areas and would be included in District Four, um, there's a small portion. Um, kind of, it's basically south of Del Dios, that is not included, it'd be part of, um, District. East County District along with Del Dios. So I think that covers it for, for that district's line item, uh, once this, um.
Does that work?
Yeah, I think that looks accurate, yeah.
Accepting the air, wait.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense to me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, sorry, it's gotta be, it shouldn't be including, harmony, including Harmony Grove could be up there where the cursor is now, but it should be. Accepting the area south of Del Dios, I think that's it, right?
Yes, sorry, John, you're correct, Harmony Grove, the point here is that Harmony Grove goes into District Four.
Right, yeah.
District Two.
All right. District Two, and then, yeah, writing in the same style of, of additions, it would be add Claremont Mesa. And Linda Vista Community Plan Areas. Oh, sorry, I'm actually gonna add Mission Valley, Mission Valley was. Um, split between two districts and Mission Valley in this case would be, go along with Claremont Mesa and Linda Vista. And probably also add the, if we want to be exact, um, the convoy area of Kearney Mesa, if we did want to state that.
Is this the one where Birdland is going into, Alex?
We haven't fully addressed Birdland, what I would say, Birdland was not in the map that we showed. And the population was, I think, around seventy-two hundred is what I said, I think. That. Because we're talking about moving it out of D three could potentially. Do something to the popu, overall deviation, I think. That's an important point that we need to note.
Let me specify, when we say convoy area, like a specific, uh, like we defined it up above, uh, instead of. By highway boundary, or is there a street boundary that we're looking at?
Convoy is a street.
No, I mean, when you. Go ahead.
Oh, convoy between fifty-two and. Eight oh five, I suppose.
I think.
Why don't we just use?
Yeah, exactly, Commissioner Servin, I think the language from above with SR fifty-two, I eight oh five, um, would capture that.
Alex, to confirm, we noted this correctly, under District Four, it says add the communities, is that community plan areas or?
Community plan areas would be better, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
And under District Three, are we saying add Kearney Mesa Community Planning Area? Is that? Add Kearney Mesa, come, uh, the second bullet? Is that what we're referring to?
Yeah, I mean, I think. There was an and, so it was kind of Kearney Mesa, comma, convoy area, and Sarah Mesa Community Plan Areas, but. This gets at it too. Looks good.
About directing them to, um, try to find a way to put Claremont into the coastal district. Just in general.
Commissioner Brown, I'll ask you to save that for discussion, um, since right now we're trying to just, um, describe the specifics of what's in the map, thank you.
Does the first bullet make sense where it says of Kearney Mesa? I don't know the answer, I'm just asking, um, is that where it needs to be? In other words, what is Kearney, of Kearney Mesa modifying?
It, it's the convoy area of the Kearney Mesa Community Plan.
So Commissioner Dussel, if you refer back to the second bullet under District Three. There's an area excluded from the con, from the Kearney Mesa Community Plan Area. Now we're adding that convoy area from the Kearney Mesa Community Plan Area into District.
I think that looks good, Commissioner Servin, saying that maybe it should read add Mission Valley, Claremont Mesa, Linda Vista Community Planers, and the convoy area. Bound by SR, bounded by SR fifty-two, east of eight oh five and west of the Kearney Mesa Plan Area. Community Plan Area, excuse me.
You could get rid of the Kearney Mesa Plan Area, you don't need it, because you've defined the area.
Right.
With boundaries, so you can get rid of the, of.
And it's SR fifty-two on the north.
Is that all we added to D two?
Yes, it is, and I will checking right now, but, um, just to recap, kind of globally for D two, not to write this down, but D two lost, um. The areas, uh, unincorporated, south of Alcoa. Um. It lost the Skyline Paradise Hills to D one, and then it took on what we stated there, just a very, yeah, dense population in that, that bullet.
So the highlighted stuff can be deleted.
Roll down a little bit, please, Alex, just can't see the bottom of the page there.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not running it, there we go.
Maybe based on my recollection, I think that's complete in my notes.
I'm, I'm reviewing the map and, uh, yeah, I concur as well.
Commissioner Brown, is that a hand up to contribute something now? Okay. Commissioner Diaz, while Alex is checking.
I just wanted to clarify, this is just a technical question, I know we received, um, some input from the ROV, do we need to include anything in that? Um, I mean, I know that's gonna be a given later, I just don't know which order in the process that happens.
No, it's a very good question, we will talk about that after resolving this motion. That'll be the tech, the right time, I think.
Can I just see the map one more time, please, the thirteen eleven?
Let me know if you'd like to zoom in at all, I know it's a, it's a little harder to see with all the, the block boundaries on there.
Could you zoom in on District Two, I think that's where a lot of stuff was happening, thank you. And the pink lines are thirteen A, is that correct?
That is correct.
Did we, um, also account for Solana Beach, or was that in a previous version?
Solana Beach is contiguous here, we didn't.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Can I make a motion that we?
Well, the last thing I heard was, uh, that Commissioner Servin wanted to see the map, he's seen the map, and I don't see a hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know people were waiting on me.
No, I, I was insured, if there was somebody you wanted to add, before we get into taking the motion and discussing it.
I'm, I'm, yeah, please proceed.
Great, okay, no, no problem, okay, so the motion, uh, is to be offered by Commissioner Diaz, who I assume is still comfortable being the motioner, good. Um, I'm afraid my notes were a little unclear on second or, I'm not even sure I formally asked for it, um, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Larson? Okay. So, um, we can proceed with either this list or the map, uh, in view or nothing. Um, if commissioners don't mind, I would, for a discussion, I assume the map would be the most useful thing to have up. Or we could just have an open, uh, more open, um, discussion, Sonia Arf, do you have a preference as the mover and securer?
I would vote for the map.
Okay, let's put the map up, please, and while doing that, let me ask if there's any discussion. Commissioner Brown.
Is this where I'm supposed to ask about Claremont Mesa, or is that a different discussion altogether?
This is the time to ask about that.
If, if they could just find any nick or cranny in there that they think they could put into a different district from District Four that would allow. Claremont Mesa to be moved into District Four, that would be great.
Could we zoom in on that area, please?
If I can just mention, you know, we've. With this iteration of the map, Claremont Mesa is, it's, it's very, it's very big, right, there's seventy. it's it's very, it's very big, right? There's seventy-nine thousand people, I think, is what we've said. It's difficult to, and it's also in District Two, which I believe is the least populated district. So it's challenging to move that into the coastal district.
Barbara, is there a way to split that so that the ones that are definitely coastal could be put into the coastal district and the rest of them could stay up on the hill? Not and remain contiguous with the rest of District Four, too.
Can't the canyon as a natural barrier or how? I'm just wondering.
Or Balboa.
Yeah, what's the distinction?
Is there a bridge in there we can connect to continuity? No. I mean, you could go north or south of Balboa. That might be one solution, but it does not address the issue, which is that Claremont Mason is currently in the coastal district, had no idea that they might be removed from the coastal district until after the deadline. And as Commissioner Garcia said, we've got areas up like Mira Mesa that are way far east that are in the coastal district. It just I mean, there will be a protest for this, whether it's a lawsuit or whatever it is, but this is just not right.
Commissioner Russ.
Could you put the stats up? Yeah, if I leave them up just for a while. Can you blow that up a bit? Blow it up? A little bit more. A little bit more. Oh, that's good. That's good. That's good.
Commissioner Russ, do you mind if I take another commissioner while you're?
Oh, no, I'm not. No, I'm done. That's all my request is.
Okay. So Commissioner D, Commissioner Brown, did you have something you wanted to add to? Okay, Commissioner Diaz, then Commissioner Servin.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've you know, looking at the rest of District Two as it is right now, I think that you know, these are the kind of trade offs that we need to make to balance the population. I just need to reiterate. I mean, look at the population deviation. We were able to get it from, what was it, over ten percent now down to seven point six percent and you know, looking at the D two on the western portion, I mean, we've got communities like Uptown Hillcrest. Very, very kind of, I mean, distinct communities, although they're not considered to be coastal, I believe they would have things in common with these other communities, although I don't live there, but I just think that I don't know if there would be a lot of opposition to it. But I do want to maintain integrity and all the hard work that we've done to this point. Considering the large population, I just think it'll throw it off. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Servin.
So I just want to point out that Mira Mesa is only five miles away from the coast as the crow flies. So I don't, that doesn't sound like it's like a in exceedingly large distance from the coast such that we can say that it's like definitively not a coastal community. But I I'm not, I'm not commenting on Claremont Mesa or that or anything like that. I just want to say that I think Mira Mesa is closer to the coast than maybe some people think.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Dustle, and then Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. I just wanted to agree that the Claremont Mesa is with almost eighty thousand is just too big to to move at this point. I I sympathize with what Commissioner Hanson said, but I would also go back to what Marguerite said, which is we have given the opportunity, and I understand that maybe people didn't come because they didn't think their district was going to be changed. And they still had the opportunity to come and say, we are a coastal district. And so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown, who is the last person with a hand up right now, so we may be moving to a vote after that. Commissioner Brown, then and then likely.
How about the population of Coronado and Point Loma staying back down in District One? Would that allow enough space for Claremont to come into the coastal district and still be okay down in Chula Vista? Or down in District One, I should say.
John, could I ask for the population figures?
On twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two for Coronado, right?
And Point Loma?
And John, you can pull those numbers, but I think that the point here is that unless I'm missing something in that move, putting Claremont Mesa back into District Four leaves the green district as it's shown here severely underpopulated. And it would need then to take some population elsewhere.
Yeah, and I I don't know what the I I have to, I can get that Point Loma, but it's not one of the specific plan areas, so I have to draw it. I can get it. But I think Alex's point is important. I think there's a chance that we could, in that case, extend to down more into one into areas of perhaps Golden Hill. Taking out some of Skyline Paradise Hills, but not all of it. And it's going to be difficult at that point to bring. It's still going to be difficult. It would be, it's in this configure, with this configuration map, it would be impossible. I mean, I feel pretty confident saying it'd be impossible to do all of Claremont Mesa. There's a chance by making these movements, bringing Point Loma and Coronado into one and moving to down into one that you could then move for down into a portion of Claremont Mesa.
Could you just reverse the Skyline Paradise Hills move?
From.
Wasn't that pretty heavily populated? You took it out of one and put it in two, I thought.
We did. Now, if you take that, well, no, because then one is still going to be underpopulated. Because I think we've still got like, I think it's like thirty, it's probably around thirty thousand Point Loma and Coronado. So that's also the swap you have to consider. So let's see with downtown. Yeah, Alex, you can probably run this quicker.
I'm grabbing it right now, too, just real quick. Okay, I'm still sharing my screen, right? So roughly what I just did was grab. I know this is more than I needed to, but I needed that downtown piece and then all Point Loma mostly, and I don't know if the boundary is exactly just running the highway straight up to the to the ocean or not. But that's seventy-three thousand and then Coronado is twenty-two, so we're looking at ninety-five thousand total.
More than enough.
It's is that? That is a little bit, I would want to say, I believe that's different than the existing boundary for where Point Loma comes down, which I think is going to be important because of the what we know about the ability to elect with the existing district. So I think we need to know with Point Loma exactly where that boundary is by the existing district.
Yeah, there's definitely different groups of of houses along in Point Loma. There's I don't know. There's, I mean, they're kind of spread all over the place because there's a lot of business in there, too.
Okay, commissioners, I want to run the conversation now because we're in a motion with a little bit of discipline. I'll let me take Commissioner Servin. Then I want to see if the commission as a whole wants to allow flow time to explore what's been discussed as an option, not multiple options. We're not going to have time for that, but as an option. But first, Commissioner Servin.
Thank you, Chair Bane. So Alex, I know you mentioned Birdland was had a population of about seven thousand or so. I understand that's in District Three right now. And I think we if we we can move it to District Two because District, I think the populations would work, right?
In, yeah, I actually, I know John looked those numbers up. I'm actually not a hundred percent clear. So if I zoom in on the map in a second, you guys can help me or John can too. But yeah, looking at that, I just want to look at the stats. District Two is under District Three is also under.
John, it said seventy-two hundred or seventy-three?
Yeah, roughly seventy-two hundred. It's that triangle that you see right there. Yeah, above the Mission Valley.
Yeah.
Yep.
This this area right here.
Yeah. And it'll come out a little less than that because you know, the hook, but I know you got it all.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think you're right. It's it's definitely under ten thousand. It's maybe like fifty-three.
Fifty-three?
Yeah. Fifty-three hundred, everybody.
Okay, so that's, well, that's less, yeah.
And for that, while I let flow continue, I think we might need to frame this as a friendly amendment, at least initially. Okay, Commissioners Larson and Diaz, is that okay?
I guess.
Yes.
Okay. So in a moment, we'll need to go back to the word document and amend accordingly.
Can we confirm, Alex? This isn't gonna?
Please take the time.
Get it right. Yes, let me, yeah, take the time here. So D three would be losing that to D two. D two is the most underpopulated, so it would it would it would probably almost be moot. It might improve the situation slightly because we're taking away from D three five thousand and we're giving it to to this one, so it probably would improve things just a little bit.
And clerk call, I was about to call on you. Let me, let's let this wrap up. I want to make sure we do it right, but let me get the technical details correct. John, Alex, is does that complete the the initial work to staff that?
Yes. For this Birdland change, yes.
Yeah, for that change.
Clerk call.
Your motion describes the changes needed to get from thirteen A to thirteen A version eleven, and the opening line of the motion names thirteen A version eleven, and I think you may have been intentionally vague, I might say, because you had thirteen A version eleven listed in the motion. So if you deviate at this point, that opening line of the motion doesn't make as much sense. Maybe Mark can help.
Yes, and we we will need to review that with the commission's permission, since we have agreement on the substance of the idea. I'll ask that we continue the work that we're doing, but before we vote, we will clean that up and get the language right so that it's fully consistent. Okay. Commissioner Servin, that was all you you wanted to say on that? Good. Commissioner Brown, be well, Commissioner Brown, let me ask you to speak.
What's that? Do you want me to say something?
If I, you had your hand up, I was what amounts to a straw poll to ask about next steps, but did was there something specific you wanted to say? Okay.
No, I just won't get this down till December fifteen, probably.
Okay, could I? Understood. Could I ask that we take the map off the screen? Thank you. Now, commissioners, we have a choice, and I want to make sure we're collecting information here. There is what I would term a somewhat complex idea of exploring at least Coronado and Point Loma being moved. I want to see if there is sufficient interest from the commission to move forward on that. Because and I also wanted to check on whether such a move would be treated at this point as a friendly or unfriendly amendment. Don't need a specific answer on that, but I did want to include that in the discussion. In fact, let me ask that first, since Commissioner Diaz has her hand up anyway. And then I'll ask commissioners in a straw poll whether you want to take the time to explore that or a related option as just discussed. Commissioner Diaz.
I don't think it would. I would not accept that as a friendly amendment. Um, I want to just make that the motion as is, and then if there's a way to include the population of a Birdland at some point in there, I don't know which bullet point it would be most appropriate, but.
Okay, on Birdland, just to be clear, once we've taken care of this other matter, I'll I'll ask council and staff to work with commissioners on getting the language right in the motion, since we have agreement on it in principle as a friendly amendment. Good. So thank you for that. All right, Ken, unless there's objection, and I don't see any, could I take a straw poll which commissioners would want to pursue an option?
It's not a friendly amendment in my point of view.
I understand. And so with that in mind, and that this would need to be treated as an unfriendly amendment once formed, is there interest in the commission of pursuing this option? Could I see hands, please?
This is the Coronado Point Loma thing?
Yes. Okay. Could I see a quick show of hands for, I'm sorry, Commissioner Garcia, that was in support? Okay. Could I see a quick show of hands of those who would prefer not to explore that option at this point? All right. That is fairly substantial. I prefer to hear whether the commissioners who were in favor of exploring this think they have a realistic opportunity to convince commissioners of the value of this. But if necessary, I will abide by this sense of the commission. I don't know if that was John or Alex with a hand up.
That was me. I did just want to offer the the population from Point Loma that is in District One in the current district boundaries is roughly eleven thousand or ten, ten to eleven thousand. There's some ocean population there. It's difficult to pick up. So I where Alex drew the line, I think, also went up into the neighborhoods of Ocean Beach, which is a fairly high populated area. So I just want to make sure that we understand it. It is going to be closer to thirty thousand of the population that we're looking at exchanging.
Versus the
Seventy-five or a hundred thousand or, yeah.
Well, no, real quick to clarify, the the point part I selected was about seventy thousand and then adding to Coronado was about ninety to ninety-five. So, John, what you're saying is Point Loma. Again, what, sorry, you said third, not.
It's about ten, eleven, yeah, around ten, ten and a half thousand.
Right, so add that to Coronado, that gets you about thirty-two.
Right. And so beyond that, we have to go farther north on the map. Yeah. All right. So is there interest in continuing this discussion? All right. Commissioner Brown.
Alternative to that is to make the Claremont Mesa area smaller and not have as much be in the district that's the coastal district.
In other words.
Some of the Claremont Mesa area is up on a mesa.
Okay, so in other words, dividing.
Yeah.
But in other words, dividing the Claremont Mesa area.
Right, so I don't know.
Yep. Is there interest in discussing that as an option?
Yeah, I would say yes.
And Commissioner Brown, I my hat's off to you. I I think it is well worth, especially given the points that were raised earlier, to explore any options that we can consider. We it's late, but it's not that late yet. All right. Any other comments before we move to a vote? I'm sorry, we have to do Birdland first. Any other comments? All right. Could I ask staff to bring the motion back up? Commissioner Brown, sorry.
And Chair Bane, this is Barbara. While they do that, just want to know.
And Chair Bane, this is Barbara. While they do that, just want to note that Commissioner Katerina is having a little bit of technical difficulty. So we do have her as an attendee and the clerk should be able to get her in for a vote when appropriate.
Excellent. Could we make sure she's aware that there's likely to be a vote very shortly?
Yes.
All right. Alex, John, are you best positioned? Well, first of all, let's draft the language for Birdland, and then we'll return to Clerk Call's point that we may need to address some of the front language. John, Alex, do you think we, I'm sorry, David?
I think the issue that I had is easiest to resolve by putting something where Nicole seems to be putting her cursor now, saying something like, in addition, and adding it at the bottom rather than incorporating it into any of the areas that have already been written. And I think that would do it for me.
That's an excellent way to fix it from a procedural point of view. Thank you for that. All right, so John, Alex, can, since you've done so well with the rest of the initial phrasing, can you try take a try at this?
Sure. So I think we're working within District Two here because this is going to be an addition. So where it says add Mission Valley, Claremont Mesa, Linda Vista, Community Plan Areas, and the Convoy Area, I think we also need to add to that.
Alex, we're going to, Alex, we're going to do this at the bottom of the page.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
But it's okay. In District Two, add.
And and you could use the term as a Birdland, but maybe we want to bound it by the highways or roads. So.
And Commissioner Serbin, do you have any thoughts on that?
I agree with Alex. I think we should describe it by the boundaries of the freeways. I'm sorry, you're asking me what the freeways are, I'm guessing, right?
Well, I was asking if you you had that or Commissioner Diaz or Larson.
I think I can get at it, too.
Okay.
It's east of the 163 and west of the 805.
And then the south boundary is going to be.
What is that?
Oh, I don't know what that street is.
There's Friar's Road, but then there's also I-8. I want to make sure we're not going into Mission Valley.
What, Genesee is the border?
Well, all the rest of it is in already in D2 anyway, right? So aren't we just saying that area that's north of the eight, really?
Um, the only reason I would say differently is because part of that is Mission Valley. So Mission Valley Community Plan Area actually extends, you know, north of I-8, even north of Friar's Road.
Can we just say without breaking up the Mission Valley Community Area or something like that?
That would work for me if if that's accurate to Commissioner Diaz in terms of what constitutes Birdland.
Yes.
So Alex and John, from your point of view on the demography side, that's workable language for you?
I'm reading it.
Yeah, as am I.
It's not Mission Valley Planning Area was already included. Mission Valley East is already included and in the map, isn't it, in the district?
A portion, yeah, you're correct. I mean, a portion of it was in 13A, the portion that is north of I-8 and up until the inland freeway, which is is what, I-805? So yeah, it reads good without breaking up Mission Valley. Yep, that is that is accurate what the amendment says right now.
Good with me?
Commissioner Larson?
I think we are in the amendment there, say the had the Birdland area east.
Would it make sense to say that the southern boundary is the Mission Valley Community Plan Area? So it's bounded by the SR6163 on the east, west of 805, and north of the Mission Valley Community Plan Area, right?
Yeah, that's that's correct. That's that border.
I'd agree with that.
Commissioner Diaz, is that slight change good for you? Good?
A man.
Good. The only hand I see right now is Commissioner Brown, but I assume that might be a leftover hand.
I don't want to get too persnickety, but can we not use the word amendment? It's not really an amendment. If if that's okay with the commission, I think I would be comfortable with that as the clerk. Thank you.
I see the point. All right. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Bane. Commissioner Krugliak?
Oh.
Commissioner Serbin?
I.
Commissioner Brown?
I.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Abstaining.
Chair Bane?
I.
Commissioner Hanson?
No.
Commissioner Diaz?
I.
Commissioner Russ?
I.
Commissioner Larson?
I.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina? I think she's on a phone line.
Right, and on the other.
Can you unmute yourself by pressing star six? I'm showing her is being muted. I'm hoping you can press star six on your phone.
David, can we come back to her? There's text traffic coming, so we'll come back to her.
Commissioner Dostal?
Hi.
Commissioner Inman?
I.
Commissioner Pons?
I.
Commissioner Chen? Is Commissioner Chen present?
I don't think he is.
Okay. And we'll wait for Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm so sorry to keep you waiting. I vote yes.
The motion passes with Co-Vice Chair Garcia abstaining, Commissioners Krugliak and Hanson voting no, Commissioner Chen being absent, and all remaining Commissioners who are present voting aye. 10 ayes, two noes, one abstention, and one absent.
Sorry, David, could you read that again? Just there was a slight interruption.
Yes, the motion passes. Commissioner Chen being absent, Co-Vice Chair Garcia abstaining, Commissioner Krugliak and Commissioner Hanson voting no, all other Commissioners being present and voting aye. The vote is 10 ayes, two noes, one abstention, one absent.
Very good. Thank you for that. All right, thank you very much, Commissioners. We can return full screen. So we are almost done for the evening. Let me explain where we'll be turning now. We have before us another task that we have to do with this map that is being moved forward to December 9th, and that is to work on technical adjustments, especially on the boundary lines between the various districts. Per council's advice, it is possible for us not to do that virtually tonight, but rather task that to flow, ask them to make all the technical or perhaps administrative changes. I want to consult council on the right wording for that and report back to the commission, not only with those adjustments, but with an explanation of how and what what and how and why they were made. Let me pause there and check with council first if that's if I have framed that correctly.
That that's the correct framing. I don't know whether the Commissioners need a little bit of background. There's going to be a little technical slivers in the plan. There always are. And they, for example, in one area, the line may run down the middle of the freeway, but as that line goes on, it shifts over to a block that's right off the freeway. Generally, these are little technical glitches that generally involve no population at all, are very, very little. It's typical to have to do this type of cleanup after a plan is enacted. But you're on deadline, and it has to be done, and it's your plan, and you can't give the text, the task to anybody else. It's your plan. So the plan is to have flow, do the technical scrub of the plan, and bring back to you a list of every single thing that was changed. So you can look at it if you want to and approve it. Most of it is going to be completely non-substantive.
Let me now ask John and Alex if they have anything to add to that, since they have to do this work.
You know, the only thing I would add is, and I think Marguerite's completely right. In all likelihood, it's going to have absolutely zero change on any population to the degree that that it does. It would be it it's very unlikely to do so. We will report back if it does. I think I can leave it at that.
And for both, well, especially for Marguerite, the point was raised earlier regarding ROV input.
Yes.
I think it's fair to say for tonight that will be part of the process that we look at, but may not necessarily be done if it's outside the mandate of the commission. Is that a fair characterization?
There there is a separate issue with regard to the ROV. The scrub is a technical cleanup to make sure the lines are clean. There's no sliver blocks. There's no stray little blocks, zero population that are hanging around in districts. Very common for that to happen. That's the scrub. That's the cleanup. There's a separate issue with the ROV, and this has nothing to do with what they did or what you are doing. It has to do with the census geography. The census geography does not well, in some instances splits parcels. And the result of that is it will create an ambiguity in certain instances, but not in all for the ROV as to where the voter in that parcel should be assigned to one district or the other. Generally, there are two ways to handle this. You can undertake splitting the census blocks so that they match the parcel geography. The problem with doing that is it interjects a lot of uncertainty into your population base, and it could change the population of some of your districts. The alternative to that is just to pass your plan recognizing that there are these split parcels, but prepare a document as you are preparing your final report that clearly states the intent of where the voter is supposed to be. For example, some of the split parcels are in Vista. But we also know that it's the intent of this commission that the entirety of Vista be in District Five, if that's what's in that. Therefore, that ambiguity can be resolved by the registrar of voters by looking at two sources. Your final report, number one, which will state where the communities are allocated. And in addition to that, they will have your resolution, which has a listing of census blocks and tracks, blocks and block groups. So given the lateness in the process, we've done our best. We couldn't get any extra time. It is not my recommendation that this commission embark upon a huge task of splitting census blocks. And if you want to know more about this, we had flow develop a an a sample for you to see what the consequences of doing that could be based on an actual sample provided by the ROV. Our recommendation as your council is that you just prepare a clear intent document to which the ROV can refer. And it will serve as an aid to the ROV in allocating a voter in a case of ambiguity.
And Marguerite, that clear intent document would be part of the final report?
Yes.
And we'll talk about the resolution in just a minute, Commissioners, in our final agenda item. Thank you for that. Is is there any question, clarification, or request for further discussion of this tonight? Seeing none, thank you for that. I'll say it to for the record more than anything else, the officers will be doing our usual work on the procedural side to make sure this is working and continue to consult if needed to make sure with all the adjustments that the right documents are prepared. I do want to say for the public, and I'm going to know I'll get a good, strong reaction from Flow Analytics, that our intent is to get that map posted as soon as possible. But we obviously need to make sure it's got that right level of technical adjustment. So appreciate Commissioners and members of the public your patience in seeing that we will work hard to get that out. Very good. See, no further comment. We turn to Agenda Item 10, an opportunity to review. I'm sorry.
I just want to confirm that the that the commission does not need to direct flow to do that technical scrub.
Marguerite, I consider that a part of the processing for the instruction we've just given.
I would agree. It should be what should come back to you from posting on Monday, two things. Number one, the plan. Number two, the scrub. And you still have an ability to make small changes in accordance with the scrub on the on the ninth. It would be a very different meeting if you had to make changes in accordance with parcel splits. So that
To make sure we weren't missing a step.
That should come back as a package. The plan just voted on, and the technical changes, the technical scrub.
And with that technical scrub, an explanation in writing as needed.
Correct.
To cover anything. Good. Commissioner Pons?
Yeah, just a quick question. Would that include the RPV analysis?
I was about to get to that, and I thank you very much for catching that because I had changed my plan and I forgot to mention. Yes, it will include both the ability to elect analysis from Dr. Gross and his team as well as the VRA analysis by special counsel and as needed counsel. And again, that will be posted for Commissioners and members of the public as quickly as possible. And Mr. Adelson, I see is still with us, and I'm sure is already working on it. Thank you, Commissioner Pons, for raising that. Thank you. All right, very well. So we move on. Agenda Item 10, an opportunity to review the pro forma resolution for adoption of a final redistricting map, and I will add the IRC's final report, draft versions of these resolutions. Draft versions of these resolutions were included with the agenda materials in anticipation of the IRC's adoption at our upcoming meetings on December ninth and December fourteenth, respectively. For this item, I'll again turn to Marguerite uh, and note again that this is an informational item for tonight. Marguerite, please.
Yes, um, provided a draft resolution, it essentially reviews in the recital clauses that you met every single step in the uh, statute that you are required to meet. Uh, the format that the county uses for memorializing a redistricting plan is a list of census, tracts, and blocks listed in each district. That will be incorporated into the resolution by flow. The resolution largely tracks statutory language. And the reason it does that is because you will have a final report that you will approve on the fourteenth that puts the meat on the bones about what happened in complying with the prehearing requirements. So the two documents will go together. So you will find the resolution fairly technical. Uh, that's because it is accompanied by a detailed special uh, plan. The resolution, this is an issue that needs to be worked through with the uh, County Council. The resolution needs to uh, uh, the resolution uh, needs to supersede the current districting plan. That may take two steps. Uh, your resolution, um, in my view, has statutory priority. But the county may have to clean up the books by repealing the old plan. So we're working that through, and we'll have information for you on that at your next meeting. Lastly, there will be a final resolution, which you will adopt on the fourteenth. And that is the resolution adopting your final report. So the package you will complete with is your map, your resolution, your final re- report, and the resolution adopting. So that is the package that represents your work product. So both of those are before you. The final report resolution is quite a bit shorter. And Commissioner Garcia is has done an amazing amount of work on this final report. The most important part of that work is going to happen between the ninth and the fourteenth. And and you have had many opportunities to review. Please be responsive if there are comments that you have on the draft.
Thank you for that. Before we turn to the public and then Commissioners for clarifying questions, comments, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, did you have anything you wanted to add to the presentation? Very good. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Marguerite, for that concise explanation. Clerk Call, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you, Chair Bain. Not in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to uh, address the Commission on the review of the pro forma resolution for adoption, as was described by the Commission's Counsel, you're welcome to do so. If you're listening while you are listening remotely, please raise a virtual hand at this time, pressing the raise hand button on Zoom, or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. And again, I'm going to ask you to stay on the topic. Item number ten, the review of the resolution. Begin with AI. You'll have three minutes to address the Commission. I'm showing you is being muted. You may need to unmute yourself if you want to address the Commission on this item. Okay, I'm going to move on to AI Haven, perhaps the same person. You're welcome to address the Commission on this item. But you'll need to unmute yourself. Not seeing any action being taken there. Letitia Maldonado-Stamos, you have three minutes to address the Commission.
Thank you. Um, good evening. I don't need three minutes. I just want to say thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Travis Lyon? You have three minutes to address the Commission.
Previous caller stole my thunder. I just want to thank you guys for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bain.
And the resolution garnering such praise must be welcome. Thank you. Your Pons?
Yes, I want to thank the public for their support. I mean, they've been congratulating us on staying late and doing our duties, but they are volunteers as well. So thanks for staying in there and uh, you know, giving us your feedback. The second point is to what uh, Council said. Um, I am hoping that ABSD, if they are still on the contract, would help to develop the talking points for us when we're engaged to discuss our findings and our recommendations, as well as to pull together a really series of concise and clear talking points that would be written and presented to the public on the website.
Thank you for that, and uh, I will add my thanks on behalf of the Commission, and more in just a moment. But Commissioner Pons, I was remiss earlier in not thanking you again for moving us so far forward on lessons learned. And I am continuing to take notes and prepare my inputs for that. I hope Commissioners are doing so as well throughout this process. Any other comments or questions on this agenda item? Again, thank you, Commissioners. This is an informational item. We look forward to seeing the final resolutions initially with the one for the final map for at our next meeting. We move on to adjournment. This concludes the business before the Independent Redistricting Commission today. I'm going to amend my usual closing to thank Commissioners for their professionalism and mutual respect. I know this has been very difficult at times, and I can't thank each and every one of you enough for working to understand each other. I think we have set a very high standard for other public bodies to meet, and I look forward to maintaining. So my personal thanks. It really makes it an honor to serve as Chair. That said, our next meeting will be an IRC regular meeting on Thursday, December ninth at five thirty PM at the County Administration Center in room three oh two, sixteen hundred Pacific Highway in downtown San Diego, and virtually via Zoom. More details, draft maps, and meeting links for our County IRC remain available on our website, www.dryyourcommunity.com. Thanks again, including to members of the public for attending today, including to Commissioners who took on considerable personal challenges to stay with us throughout the process. Thanks for that as well. This meeting is adjourned with wishes for a very good weekend at seven fourteen PM. See you next week.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye, all.
Thank you.
And you too, Jack.
Jack, thank you in particular.
Splitting the main brace, my friend. Don't forget, we got it.
All right, good night, all.
Night.
Hey, Jack, send me your phone number to my email address so we can establish contact back channel, okay?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do. That that'll be good. I'll send it to your county email.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, too. He's a good guy. Uh, he's the Admiral.